Okay, everyone has seven clocks. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the light of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Gilson.
Here.
Losimo.
Roger.
Pat.
Here.
Wilczuski.
Here.
Luntz.
Here.
Funkhauser.
Here.
Spears.
Here.
Tealance.
Here.
Form is established.
Okay, I do have one amendment to the agenda. I would like to move Public Works Committee to report out to after citizen comments. Do you have any other amendments to the agenda?
I have one.
Yes?
I'd like to pull number seven, ten, and eleven for further discussion.
Okay. I will put those under Public Works Committee's flag. Any other amendments to the agenda? Out of favor?
Aye.
You're opposed? Okay, we do have one presentation on the agenda tonight. I know many of you have read the paper, but the city has started a call to build Yorkville campaign as an incentive program to help residential home builders get things moving here in Yorkville. We do have our first recipient here tonight, Ms. Kristi Bartlett. So Kristi, could you come right up? I would like to submit this certificate of acceptance to you. It says here, this certifies a building permit number 2012-00018 for a new single-family detached residence to be constructed at 378 Bertrand Drive within Bristol Bay subdivision by the Polty Homes Corporation, where the contract purchaser listed below has been approved for participation in the United City of Yorkville Buyers of Undeveloped Info Lot Discount Incentive Program. Kristi, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to Yorkville. Okay, we have no public hearings tonight, so we will move on to citizen comments. I know we have quite a few people here tonight who want to speak. If you're willing, you can speak as you want. We'll try to keep it brief. We don't want to keep saying things over and over again. Let's keep it respectful, keep it moving. I think Lynn, you will kick it off. Please state your name for the record.
Yes. Ms. Phil and Warren can help out with me.
Can I also ask that anybody that speaks at the podium today also name, put their name, address, and city that they reside? That way we know who lives here and who doesn't know.
And that's your choice, of course. I mean, it was on the signing sheet. If you want to do it, that's up to you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lynn Newbichek, and I'm here this evening as a volunteer board member of Push for the Path, a non-for-profit organization that will be created for the purpose of raising the shortfall of $220,000 to $357,000 that is needed to build a 2.7 file Kennedy Road multi-trail from Route 47 to Mill Road. With me are my other volunteer board members, and I'd like for them to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Warren Sharp.
I'm Billy McHugh.
John Ammons could not be here with us this evening. He had a prior commitment. We are a group of dedicated and recognized individuals who are embedded in Yorkville. We understand the importance of leveraging the almost $1.4 million grant that has been awarded to the city of Yorkville to make this push for the path a reality. And we are here tonight to formally ask the city council to accept this grant, which will allow us to move forward in becoming an official 501(c)(3) non-for-profit organization. In your packet that I emailed to you today, you will find our articles of incorporation. We are prepared to submit this document to the Secretary of State tomorrow morning, and we are also prepared to open a bank account so we will then be able to accept donations. We are also prepared to kick off our first campaign called The Power of One immediately. This campaign will raise $100,000 by July the 5th of 2012 and will act as a salad base for our fundraising efforts. In your packet, you will find, for your information, information about The Power of One and a pledge form. The next item in your packet is an email from John McHugh. John could not make it tonight, correct? He is here. John, do you want to raise your hand?
Yes, I'd like to.
Okay, thank you. I know you were picking some up at the airport. John has been responsible for the annual golf outing, held in Dan and Darlene McHugh's honor for the past seven years. In this email, John states that the golf outing has raised over $200,000 during that seven-year period that it has been held. And he has also stated that going forward, he has pledged to donate all of the funds to Push for the Path. We've also confirmed the date of our golf outing for this year. It will be held on Saturday, August the 11th, at Blackberry Oaks Golf Course on Kennedy Road. The next document in your packet is a spreadsheet demonstrating exactly how we will be able to raise the required funds. As you can see, we are focusing on raising over $350,000 and have really tried to keep our expectations realistic. Local business owner and resident Mark O'Malley could not be with us this evening. He's out of town. He asked me to provide you with a copy of the rendering of the ornamental commemorative archway that he has also pledged to build as a dedication to Darlene McHugh, along with a copy of his email. And then you'll also find two editorials from our local newspaper, The Kennel Com Record, in support of Push for the Path. We have collected over 60 emails in support of Push for the Path since just last Thursday. I know many of the people are here tonight who are in support of the project. Just today, I received a number of emails from individuals from Nycor who work with Darlene. So I'd like to ask all of you who are here tonight to raise their sign of support for the trail so that all of you know who we are. Thank you very much. Yorkville has been a community that has been abundant and extraordinary committed volunteers. The outpouring of support and willingness to become involved that we have experienced in the short time that we have been together as a group on Push for the Path is remarkable. I am honored to stand with this group. I know that working together as a public-private partnership, we will truly accomplish great things for our community. We are fortunate to have residents and business owners who are knowledgeable, creative, and connected to a vast multitude of resources. This is an exciting new chapter in Yorkville's history. I can't wait to get started. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman.
Please state your name for the record.
Rachel Englehart. Good evening, friends and neighbors. My name is Rachel Englehart, and I am a mom with three young kids and a citizen of Yorkville. I'm so excited to be here tonight with my six-year-old son, Kayden, who has been following the Yorkville Push for the Path effort closely, and he asks to join in here tonight. I feel something really powerful in this room tonight, and that's the love that we all have for our city. We are all of us united here in our desire to make Yorkville the best possible place it can be, the best in every sense: safety, health, fun, fitness, recreation, economically. I came here tonight to talk to you about my vision of how to fund this Yorkville bike path. Of course, when I say Yorkville bike path, I'm talking specifically about the Kennedy Road section of path. But without that Kennedy Road section of path that's going to connect the existing smaller pieces of path that we have in our city, without that, we're going to have some pieces of Yorkville bike path in Yorkville. With the Kennedy Road section of path, we are going to have a Yorkville bike path. That is a connecting safe trail of somewhere between 11 and 15 miles of path in our city, uniting our city. I know that we all already agree that this path is desperately needed by our city and will be well-used and well-loved once it is built. We all agree that the state's offer to fund 80% of the cost is an amazing opportunity now to be met. What we need to figure out is how to come up with our city's small portion of the cost. Alderman, I'll admit you're originally feeling quite frustrated when you refused to consider city money to fund this project, which will provide so much to our city. However, after really thinking about this, I've come to actually appreciate the challenge that you've given us, the citizens of Yorkville and the citizens of our surrounding cities, who also want this path as much as we do. You've given us the opportunity to band together to raise the money. Just like this path, once it is built, will provide us with a place to come together and enjoy our city, our fundraising plans will do the same. And how cool will it be when we can say, "Hey, we did this. We built this path, a path truly for the people and for our people." Do you know how motivated we are going to all be to get out there and really love and use and enjoy this path? Do you know how motivated we will be to keep it, protect it, because we built it? I am certain that there are thousands of people in our community and neighboring communities who want to contribute financially to this path. There are people like me who have been sitting at home all along, reading the paper, thinking, "Okay, so you want us to privately raise the money for this path? Just tell me how to do it. Tell me who to write check to and where to send it." I'm here tonight to tell you how we are going to reach out to all those people who want to contribute and how we will raise a substantial portion of the city's construction costs for the path. Lynn Newbichek has already told you about concrete plans for how a well-established community golf outing will, over the next six years, raise a considerable portion of the bike path's cost, around $100,000 or more, which is a third to a half of the overall cost. I'm here to talk about another crucial aspect of the fundraising, a grassroots, citizen-led, citizen-provided effort of... Sorry, excuse me. Oh, a citizen-provided donation campaign that will take place this spring and early summer and is anticipated to raise approximately $100,000 for this path, or another one-third to a half of the cost. Okay, so how are we going to get our citizens to raise $100,000 in just this spring or summer? I know you want no specifics, so here is what I propose. A core group of 100 passionate, connected citizens will form small teams of themselves plus three or four friends. Each of those 100 teams will commit to raising $1,000 as a team. 100 teams times $1,000 each equals $100,000. That is the power of one. The primary means for collecting the money will simply be through word of mouth. We will go out and ask for immediate, one-time, deductible donation from our friends and neighbors. We will ask via email, Facebook, phone, by walking door-to-door in our own neighborhoods. We will make it easy for people to donate by providing electronic means if that is their desired method. That's the gist of it. We get out there and ask, ask, ask. And it will be easy, because we have a lot of people who want this path and are happy to contribute. We one-time, 10, 20, or 30, or even 50 or $100 donation for this path. How many of you here tonight are willing to give a one-time donation of 10 or 20 or 30 bucks?
Yeah.
How many of you know friends, family, and neighbor who are willing to give 10 or 20 or 30 dollars? There are over 16,000 people in our town that we just need to ask, not just the registered voters, not just a small portion of the registered voters who actually go out and vote, not just the property owners who need to have something. We're going to ask everyone. And there are also many people in neighboring cities who are just as excited as we are about getting this path, because they'll know they'll use it too, and they want to contribute financially. I've already had plenty of people who live outside of Yorkville contacting me, asking how they can donate money. This isn't just a Yorkville issue. This is a Fox Valley community issue. Only 4,000 people, and that's less than a quarter of Yorkville's population, only 4,000 people gave a one-time 25, just $25 donation. There's $100,000. Of course, some people will give more and some people will give less. And we might even get more than 4,000 people to contribute. That's the power of coming together. While our 100 fundraising teams will be encouraged to simply go out and ask for donations, they will also be empowered to come up with their own creative ways to raise their teams $1,000. The important thing is giving 100, just 100, to commit to this plan. In the last one week alone, just one week that we've come up with this, we've already secured commitments from plenty of people. Guess who is number one on that list? Our mayor, Eric Gominski. There are over 40 subdivisions in our city, and if we can regroup two team leaders from each one of the subdivisions, there's 18 leaders. We've already got 20. Did you realize that those 20 people actually represent our close-to-year payment for this path? It's about $19,000 in 2012, 2013. Already covered, already committed. Just wait until the rest of this town hears about this challenge. I will let you, there are 16 leaders sitting out here in this audience right now. So, I thank you for issuing this challenge to privately raise funds for our bike path. I've lived in Yorkville for most of my life, and if there is one thing I know about our city, it is this: we come together and we rise to a challenge. That's not just the Yorkville of the past when our city was small. It's the Yorkville of the present. I know a lot of people in this town, a lot of the townies, a lot of the newbies, and I know they're good people. People who rise to a challenge. I know we can, and we will come together to raise our city's small portion of the bike path's cost. And as for the Yorkville of the future, where are we going to be? Coming together on this Yorkville bike path, right? I am confident in your good sense to recognize the power of our good people. I am confident that you will raise our fundraising plans with a "thank you for doing this, thank you for making it possible for our city to succeed on the road, and a million-dollar asset for the good of these people." I am confident that you will respond with a firm and enthusiastic yes to the state of Illinois Bike Path Fucker, so that we can begin this fundraising for this great path. Thank you.
Before we move on, I'd actually like to ask if there is anyone here in the audience that would like to take on this and pledge to be a part of The Power of One, to pledge $1,000. We did a day. We have a number of people here. So before we leave this evening, we'll make sure that we get your names and numbers, and because that will input us further than what we were before. So I thank everyone for their willing to participate in this. And I'd like to turn now to the accused now.
My name is John McHugh. Ms. Lynn had stated I'd sent her an email. I have been involved and headed the fundraiser to honor my brother Danny since Kayden passed away in 2005. We did, as she had said, we have raised over $200,000. We started that golf outing simply to provide scholarships as a way to honor him. And with the tremendous support of just our family and friends, we raised over $150,000 in four years. And this was solely with a golf outing. While my family and I have always supported a bike path being installed along this busy and very dangerous section of Kennedy Road to prevent another death or serious injury, I've always personally believed that this should be a community decision. And this board, you guys put that to the community, and I realize they don't know. However, today, we are at a much different crossroads. What we're seeing today is members of your community have stepped forward with a plan to take up this task and commitment with absolutely no financial burden to your community. While I haven't been present at the previous meetings on this issue, I have followed it closely and have been made aware of your concerns. The strongest and most compelling argument that I've heard from this board is your fear of being on the hook for this bike path financially. And that's why I wanted to speak here tonight. As I stated at the beginning of what my family has been able to accomplish in such a short time, and to me, it's something much more trivial than what we're talking about here tonight. And as they've demonstrated, the Push for the Path is a much larger group with the ability to generate more community dollars along with corporate and local business support. Look, much of what you guys do is a gamble. I mean, when you make your city budget, you're gambling, you're guessing, you're educated guesses, but you're trying to decide what's coming in, how we're going to pay for things. And regardless of your decision tonight, you're going to be taking a gamble. But my question is to you, is are you willing to gamble on us or gamble that somebody else is going to kill on that road? I'll accept Darlene's death as a terrible, however preventable accident. But if you don't accept this opportunity, that Push for the Path is offering, we're all should be held accountable the next time somebody has killed on that road, and it's going to happen again. All this group is asking for is a chance to make a difference. And since you're going to gamble tonight, I just pray that you gamble on us. Thank you.
My name's Rick Randolph. I'm from Illinois. I'm with the Prairie Park Plans Ecosystem, which is a part of the day one. It's a volunteer group that works in Will, Kendall, Glensville, and Key County for the programs and trails. I'm here as the vice president of the organization, and also a gentleman is here as the president to speak tonight. Throughout the years, I've followed the articles on Route 47 that's going to be built in Kinnick County. Everybody likes it, long time coming. Comes to accommodate a new, wider road, more cars. It also has its own bike trail. And I know everybody expects the people to stop by and enjoy the beautiful little towns on the river. But this trail is going to be built alongside of it as it goes north. It's going to be coming to an end. I've also read the articles about the discussion on the Kennedy Road Trail, a trail that's desperately needed for safety, for conductivity, to join the trails that will be existing in the area, and also provide a connection throughout the county. Kennedy Road is a very busy territory, a vibrant location that will see growth in the future in the coming years. Kennedy Road needs its trail too, a trail to accommodate hikers and bikers and pedestrians in a safe, connecting lane. Scores of people are also here tonight who believe as I do and pledge their support for the project, for the benefits, in front of financial need to make the accommodation matching funds. All that's needed is the vision and leadership of the committee to accept this grant. Thank you.
My name is Bob Mays. I'm sorry to talk against the hard fact, but...
Sir, would you state your name for the record? State your name, and if there's a signing sheet, sign in.
My name is Bob Mays. I'm with 706 Morgan. I've lived here for 50 years. And if the Alderman are going to vote for something tonight, I would like for them to vote the same way as they would if they did this financial problem with their own household. I just left the city, the rec center, and I talked to the personnel in charge of the rec center. And he said they had 1,400 members at the rec center and approximately 3,000 total that are not members. They've just come and used the basketball court and other things. There's a total of about 3,000 people that use the rec center. And I would like to see the bridge over River Road repaired and fixed so that we can use it again. And I would also like to see the rec center continue as is. And I would like all of you, Alderman, to vote tonight the same way as if you would use your... You would vote for your household finances. And that's all I have to say.
If anyone will step up, please sign in.
Good evening, Mayor Gominski, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'm here also to be in favor of the bike path. And you will hear from a lot of people about how good it is for Yorkville. And I'm sure you believe all of you know that. You feel it's good for the city of Yorkville. But as the keepers of the purse, as you may say, you have to be one of our money, I think the Push for the Path will meet their goal. I think they will be able to raise the money. And I think with that in mind, you should also then think about who's going to pay for it after it's done, how you're going to maintain it, maintain it. Eric Deuce will be saddled, as you might say, with the task of keeping it up. And it's going to be a challenge. It won't cost money, not a lot. But if you think about the number of people that will use this bike path, I for one have to take my bicycle all the way to Oswego and North Aurora, Sugar Grove to get on the bike path. I have to ride there to get on. This will allow me not to have to do that. But when you think about the people that'll use it as opposed to or compared to the people that use our parks in our town now, not a lot of people use them, unfortunately. There'll be Mr. Gilson has one across from his house, one down the street from me. They'll use, yes, but not very much. Bike path will be used by a lot of people. When you think about our baseball diamonds, in particular, are only used three months a year. That's it. I mean, I wish they could be used more than baseball when we play from April through Fourth of July. Maybe one or two may be used after that. The amount of money that we spend maintaining ball diamonds in this town is a lot. And I know I sat on the Yorkville youth baseball board for many, many years, coached many years. That's also some of the people I've seen here too. Diamonds aren't used that much. And I think a solution you may want to look at is the park board could charge each person that uses that field $2 on top of the fee that they use. This is just a suggestion. $2 on top of every player playing who's going to maintain those fields. That money then would free up a lot more for Mr. Deuce to be able to maintain these paths. That's one of the things that'll probably come forth with Push for the Path, is they raise money. They'll not only look for ways to pay for it, but also to maintain it. Ideas that council should consider. Our parks are not used as much as they should be for a lot of reasons, but I think a bike path will be used by a lot of people. Because from there, you can go all the way, St. Charles, Wisconsin. You can go for a long ways. And I think the city council, or I hope the city council would at least give this committee Push for the Path time to be able to raise the money so that you may be able to put this path in. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Connie Reyer. I'm creative director of Soul Media Group. I'm here on behalf of the local Yorkville business, on behalf of Jason Sol, the owner of Soul Media Group. He is a Yorkville resident. Soul Media Group is committed to supporting... Soul Media Group is committed to supporting Push for the Path and providing web presence for Push for the Path so that this grassroots effort can get going. We'll do this via established website already. You can go to pushforthepath.org, we've already created it. You'll be able to donate directly on the website to Push for the Path. You'll be able to join forces to become a member of Power One right on the website. And you can make donations there too. So we're just here as a local business supporting Push for the Path.
Hello, my name is Wendy Martin. I'm a resident of Yorkville, and I've lived in the Grand Reserve subdivision for over five years now. I've been extremely frustrated over the multi-use path debate since I first became aware of it. To my understanding, the city had applied for a grant from the state and received it, case closed, I thought. I thought if the city had applied for a grant, they had figured out the monies to cover the cost of their portion. But alas, not the case. Then it was brought to a vote, a vote that I believe was given to uninformed citizens. A lot of citizens thought they were going to have to pay thousands of dollars on their tax bill. Not the case, it was actually like the cost of a tooth, I think, for the average household. But it was voted on, and it almost passed anyway, even though the public was uninformed. I'm not sure why it was voted on in the first place. Do the residents vote for new traffic lights? Do we vote for what type of police cars? Are horses used? No, these are counts on safety during decisions. Our town is growing. It may have slowed down over the past few years, but it will go back to where it was. I understand that my own subdivision has been purchased and will be building homes again as early as this summer. That is a lot of bike riding, running, dog walking, children, playing, residents. It's also a lot more traffic. Right now, we in Grand Reserve can't ride anywhere. Every path and sidewalk is without ice. There is no safe ways for our kids to get to school. I'm already cringing at seeing some of the little guys I've noticed riding crookedly alongside traffic. Imagine when the houses of Sardines are built again. Imagine when the population begins to grow more rapidly again, imagine. Now imagine a town where we can ride downtown to buy ice cream or popcorn, or visit the cute shops and watch the kayaks by the river. A town that is prosperous like Geneva or St. Charles. And the crazy thing is, is we aren't even asking for your money anymore. We will raise the money. We will have 5Ks and bowling tournaments and sit out by the river with cans if we have to. But you have to give us a chance. Please try to see in the future of our town. In the words of Carol McHale, "Progress is a tide; if we stand still, we will surely drown." To stay on the crust, we have to keep moving. I don't know about you guys, but I don't want to drown, and I certainly don't want to be hit by a car. Thank you.
My name is Jenny McKee. First and foremost, on behalf of the McKee family, we'd like to thank Lynn, John, and Maureen for forming the Push for the Path organization. We all wouldn't be here without your fortitude and determination to see this through. Secondly, thank everybody who's present here today and has taken the time out of their busy schedules to show their schedules to show this at work. We, the family of Darlene McKee, still struggle on a daily basis with the loss of such a phenomenal friend, sister, aunt, and mom. Something so simple as going for a Sunday morning bike ride turned into a tragic accident and turned our lives upside down. We realize nothing is going to bring Darlene back. However, we also want to guilt the community and another family for suffering this loss. And this is just the beginning. As both Darlene and her late husband Gandy would believe, let's see the positive through the negative. Please accept this grant. Let's build this path. Everyone here and beyond will see this through and raise the funds to build the path and potentially save a life. Those who knew Darlene, know she would do it for you. Let's do it for her. One thing I know is the money is a problem. I know I can raise the money. We just need you're okay. Thank you.
Oh, go ahead. Please say your name.
Samantha Keen. I'm on cross country at Yorkville Middle School, and we need a safe place to run because last year when my teammates almost hit by a truck while we're running. And we need trails to run that are safe and don't open River Road because right now it's a safe place to run at. Because it's right now it's safe and light because not a lot of people are driving. So, thank you.
I'm sorry, but I'm still stuck on the regular business, so my position on bike paths is the same as what that goal is. Your Honor, members of this honorable council, it has come to my attention that three candidates, now four this evening, in two, possibly three, now four districts have had their signs mysteriously removed. And in one instance, one candidate had several signs disappeared. Mysteriously yet is that their opponents have not had their signs disappear. Your Honor, while I admit that there is no evidence of foul play at word here, the acts are certainly suspect. Assuming, and I would reemphasize, assuming that man had a hand in these mysterious cases, I would charge that these persons violated the candidate's First Amendment rights to freedom of speech. They violated the candidate's rights under the Fourth Amendment to be secured in the papers in First, violated the candidate's rights under the Ninth Amendment by attempting to limit the candidate's rights, violated a portion of the candidate's rights under Section 1 of the Fourteenth Amendment, and in cases where the candidate's are of the female sex, have had the Nineteenth Amendment rights violated. On a moral basis, that the individual or individuals, if any, have violated our citizens' rights on the pretense that our citizens as Americans are too dumb, too stupid, and too ignorant to know who's best for them, and thus our choices to be limited. I must further charge that if these actions by man, if any, took these ever and ever tentacle actions during the night under the cloaks of darkness for the purpose of intimidating the candidates and to stop their message, that these perpetrators have no more courage than the night riders of the white knights of the Ku Klux Klan. Freedom has many difficulties, and our democracy is not perfect. And these actions serve no purpose other than to make mockery of our system and our form of government here at home and around the world. I wish to make then my message very clear to all incumbents, regardless of party affiliation, that the rights of man come not from the generosity of the state, but from the hand of God. And while other peoples, I remind you that liberty and blessings associated with freedom flourish when the spirit of God flows freely and the hand of man is absent. Your Honor, this evening, I then petition the council that the following steps be taken: that this council put forth a resolution condemning such actions; that this council work with law enforcement in clarifying election and candidate signs as where they are to be made with the standards, and that the standards be made via by the press; that due to the fact that such actions are so architrius to our American form of government, that fines and penalties ranging from $500 to $5,000 be imposed for campaign sign tampering and theft. To our citizens, I ask that you be vigilant and watch out for sign tampering; that you contact law enforcement and report all such activity; that you use cameras and video, including hunting cameras and a motion trigger, to capture any such activity and information about the perpetrators. To all candidates running for public office for the first time, regardless of political party, or for the public office that you are seeking, and especially to those of you who have been affected for these hiatus acts, I remind you that liberty is not for the timid and freedom is not for the painted heart. During the Revolutionary War, only 15% of the 13 colonies came out to fight for and defend our British amendments. The few that fought were outnumbered in many battles by professionally fully armed, well-trained soldiers at a ratio of 20 to 1. The morale of the British was high, but never higher than the American people's spirit to be free. I therefore encourage you to continue your battles, that you might ignite the fires of liberty one heart at a time. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you.
Three years ago, I moved here from Timney Park to begin my career as a teacher at Yorkville High School. In that short time that I've lived in this community, I've seen what a strong network we have. Earlier this year, I had the privilege to help another fundraiser committee who attended. We raised a lot of money for another family in this community. And so, I'm here speaking on behalf of some members at Yorkville High School and the Yorkville wrestling team, and stating that we will assist with any help that you need, any volunteer programs, anything that we can do to help organize. We've done it before, and we'll do it again. Thank you.
When you vote tonight, I would appreciate it if you would take into account your vote, the cost of the annual maintenance for this path, the cost of the liability insurance when somebody is injured, raped, or murdered on the bike path, as happened to a friend of mine, well, hasn't happened, has happened to a friend of mine in Elmhurst when she sued the city of Elmhurst for several million dollars. I would ask yourselves the question, what if the fundraisers fall short of their goal, and now the city is going to be on the hook for X amount of dollars, well, city taxpayers? And I would also ask you to consider what guarantee is it, what guarantee do you have or do we have that you're actually going to get the money from the state? The state's broke. The state doesn't have any money. Yorkville doesn't have any money. Apparently, all the people that have money are sitting in this room right now, and I think that's really nice. The other thing that I would encourage you to take into account when you vote tonight is that the citizens of Yorkville voted this down twice. There was nothing on the ballot that said, what if the people of Yorkville take up a collection or have three fundraisers and collect the money? I recall voting for this, voting against this twice. And if we go ahead with this, then to me, our vote means nothing. And why don't we just dispense with elections, and let's just come to the city council meeting every week and take a vote? Thank you for your time.
As I said, I'm on the board for Push for the Path. And I was here maybe a month ago and talked about this. And the point I talked to mostly at that time was that this is not going to cost the taxpayers a penny. And again, that was not on the ballot, that this was going to be free. This was going to cost the taxpayers, now it's not. As you've heard from my brothers, Lynn, all the people here, we have been involved in raising money. And we have never had a true purpose to raise big dollars, but we've raised almost over $200,000. And we did this with family and friends. And we have a large family and a lot of friends, but now we got the community along with us of Yorkville, the surrounding towns, there's people from many different towns here that are here to support this. And I know your question is, you guys all want this, as long as the citizens do not have to pay for this. And we're telling you and all these people that we are going to take care of that. And I don't know how else we can do it by what the people have said here from the community that's going to step up and raise the money for this. They're not raising this money is not an option. The only thing that can stop us is your vote. And we will raise the money. Thank you.
I approach my daughter Eloise, who learned that we don't have a prepared speech, but I just wanted to get up and say that we moved here 10 years ago, and I feel a little bit guilty for moving away from the original house we're in, which is two blocks from where Darlene and Q's accident occurred. One of the reasons we moved was because our neighborhood did not have sidewalks, it didn't have pools, and it was important for us to raise kids and have them be able to participate in physical education activities in a safe way. She wanted to step up with me, a little shy right now, but she's part of her student council at Autumn Creek Elementary School where this path will ride right alongside Kennedy Road. I approached Dave Assarani, the principal of Autumn Creek Elementary School, and he said that he is supportive of the path and would be, Eloise is interested in giving support from the student council and the student body there. I also approached, and she was unable to make it tonight, the Girl Scout leader of the Northern Illinois District, of which she just joined this year. And we've been given permission to approach all the Girl Scout troops within Yorkville to garner physical support for this initiative. So, we're proud to be one of the, how many people now? One of the, one of the nine, one of the nine people who have already committed to raising $1,000. That's about it.
My name is John Church. I'm representing tonight the Conservation Foundation. And the Conservation Foundation, I think many of you are aware of, is quite active in the area on a number of issues related to land and water and other conservation type of activities. And I'm just here tonight to say that the Conservation Foundation supports the effort to complete the trail system and would like to see this phase of it completed through the city. And secondly, if there's anything that the Conservation Foundation can do that might offer some type of assistance in completing the project, they certainly will have that discussion. The other thing I'd mention is that along that line, there's a new publication along about the Fox River that does also show the Fox River Trail System that this will hook up to. I've got a file over here that I'll distribute or pass down very soon. So, thank you for your time.
Good evening, I'm Jill Flashman, resident of Yorkville, and I lived here over six years ago from Ultra. As you know, that's one of the premier communities in our country. And I'm actually a person that has bike path built right on my own property. I planned it easement for that to be done. I went to my first meeting regarding Darlene. I went to my first meeting regarding building the bike paths when my son was about a year and a half old. The initial plan was voted down, and later on, that was in the round, before nineteen seventy-nine. And finally, in around nineteen ninety-five, we got a bike path. And he got his driver's license that year. So, unfortunately, I didn't reap the rewards from that, but I was told that the wheels of village government turned very slowly. So, I have to ask you, if the, uh, the cost is much now, what will the cost be in the future compared to what it would cost us now with this federal grant? And also, when I go to sell my home in this community, I'll be investing in things that will make it more attractive to, to buyers. And one of the things that will make it more attractive to a buyer is to have amenities in the community. Anyone moving to this area is going to be comparing us to the surrounding communities. What do they have to offer? Do they have good schools? Do they have a good recreation system for their children? Do they have bike paths? So, if you think it will cost us money to not to have a bike path, think what it will cost us each, when we sell our homes, without a community that has these amenities. I think it'll be more than twenty dollars.
Hello, Mayor Council. This is fun. I'm Rodney Sutcliffe, four twelve Park Street, and I'm also the owner of Budwater Ice Cream, a small local business, only less than a year old. And I'm happy to be working with Len Duzek and this awesome group of people to have a first business fundraiser for the Push for the Path. We're going to be donating money for every item purchased, um, on March twentieth, we'll go directly to Push for the Path. And I'm hoping that anyone else out there that has a business, another friend that has a business, maybe could do the same thing. Do it over and over and over, spend some of their time, and this can help make this goal. And I'm very overwhelmed by the representation tonight. I've lived here about twenty years, and it kind of counted my entire life. And it's really inspiring to know that, you know, Yorkville has grown tremendously, we still have this great heart. So, thank you all for coming.
Let me sign in real quick first. My name is Lisa Peterson. I've lived here a little over six years, and I'm a resident of Yorkville. And I have some questions, and I also have some comments regarding the path. First of all, it's my understanding that the city council has until August of this year to let IDOT know if they want to proceed with the funding. So, this is something that we don't have to take a vote on tonight. This vote can be tabled, because we have a few more months yet to make that decision. Sorry, I'm trying to collect my thoughts. Part of it is, I have issues. And part of it is, is that the city council, for the last two years now in a row, has raised our tax levy. You know, this was an issue because the residents, none of the residents ever said they didn't want this path. The residents simply said we couldn't afford it. And if we have a group now that is willing to collect funds for the path, that's a wonderful idea. But I, I have concerns regarding the guarantee on it. All of you in city council, you agreed to represent the residents and your constituents. The residents voted twice and told, turned down the path. I just, I feel that you need to go back to the residents again, and say, okay, you know, we have this group of people, they're willing to commit to raise the money, you know, are you comfortable with this, if they fall short? Personally, the ones that want to spearhead this, to raise the money, I, I don't know if it's possible, but I'd like to see a personal guarantee. I would like to see a statement drawn up by the city attorney, with these people that are organizing this non-for-profit organization, that are actually going to be listed on it, to give a personal guarantee, to give their houses collateral, to say, okay, we're this confident, and we're a hundred percent sure we're going to raise these funds. You know, I mean, everybody here is saying, we can do it, we can do it, then it should be a moot point to have to issue a personal guarantee, you know, for the funds. It's just, you know, since I've moved here in six years, I've been burned. You know, a bike path would maybe be nice, but it's clear on the other end of town, and I'm probably not going to be able to use it. I can't even ride my bike around my block, because my roads are falling apart. I mean, my roads are so bad in my subdivision, and we keep talking about all this growth and development and everything, but you're forgetting the existing residents, and you're forgetting the existing infrastructure of the city. And I just have a problem with keep wanting to add new, and keep wanting to build, and keep doing all these things, while the rest of the town is just literally crumbling and falling apart. I want to see all the streets in my subdivision get repaved. That's what's needed. There's other things as well that I, you know, we have empty, we've got this build program going on with the city now, and we're giving people tax credits for their houses, but we have an entire strip mall on the corner of Seventy-one and Route Forty-seven that's completely empty. We have empty and abandoned houses that have been foreclosed on, and they're sitting empty for months on end. And, you know, who wants to spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on a house that's sitting empty, when the tax assessor's office has that house assessed at two hundred thousand? Who wants to buy that house and fight with the county, the, the Kendall County Tax Assessor's Office? Because I've been fighting with them for two or three years with the property value of my house. You know, I can't even afford to sell my house now for what we owe on our mortgage. I mean, and we have so much equity dumped into our house, we're stuck either way, you know? And it just, you know, new is good, I mean, new is nice. If you can have a bike path at no cost to residents, that's, that's fine, that's great. I just want a guarantee. That's all I'm asking. If you're that confident, and that sure, and that a hundred percent, and that gun home, that you guys can raise the money, then more power to you. But then put your money where your mouth is, and put your house up as collateral, so that if you fall short on the funds, you're willing to take out the home equity loan, make the difference. Because we've had too much stuff in the past to just come back to bite the residents in the butt. We've had the Rock Royce Sewer Project, that's been, I don't even want to go there. Now we've got the, I don't even know what it's called, the Countryside Parkway. I, I don't understand how these deals with the developers and everything. So, the city council takes out a bond to, for the development of this countryside center. So, they go ahead and sell the bond, because they have a proven developer that says that they're going to develop this property. So, the developer tears down everything that's there, the existing mall that's there. So, the city goes ahead and sells the bond, and re-inverses the developer for the demolition. To me, if they were going to do business in our town, they should have paid for their own demolition. And now, in a few short years, we're looking at one point eight million dollars that the residents are going to have to pay, if this cannot be developed in the next few years. And it's just, there's been too many things that have come back to bite the residents in the butt, with higher and higher and higher taxes. If you want to make Yorkville a desirable place to live, let's have some decent roads to drive on, roads that we use three hundred and sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours a day. Not a path that's going to get used twelve, fourteen hours a day in the summertime for maybe four or five month tops. It's not going to be plowed or maintained in the wintertime. I mean, you know, the bike paths are nice, and, you know, private organization or group can raise the money for them, fine, but I want a guarantee. I want a personal guarantee, so that it doesn't come back and bite me in the butt like every other bad decision that's been made in the past, when it comes to any kind of growth or development in this town. You were elected by me and residents just like me to represent our best interest, and when I live here in this town, and I can't even ride my bike around my block, and my streets are falling apart, and my car's getting torn up driving to, driving to my house every day, and my property taxes keep going up, because you keep raising the tax levy, and you keep pushing for all this new development and growth, with one bad deal after another to developers, I mean, you have to be responsible at some point. You know, before we add new, new homes, new restaurants, new stores, new shops, new strip malls, you know, new anything, you have to take care of the existing residents first. You have to make this a desirable place for the existing residents to want to live. And when you keep raising the tax levy, and you're not fixing the sewers, and you're not fixing the streets, it's not a desirable place to live. If I can get my money out of my house, all the money I dumped in my house, that'd be out of this town tomorrow. That's how I'm thinking. I mean, you know, I just want, you know, decent roads to drive on, and a, a good quality of life. I want lower property taxes, reasonable property taxes. And, you know, if you guys want the path, and you want to raise the money for the path, more power to you, but I, I want to see a personal guarantee for the money. I would like not to see the city council vote on this tonight. I would like you to go back and ask your constituents how they feel about this, and if we can do some kind of personal guarantee. I don't know what the legal ramifications are, this non-for-profit thing. I don't know if there's a reason why that hasn't been filed and pursued yet. You know, it's kind of a catch-22, the city doesn't want to approve this until we know the funds are there, we have a guarantee, but they don't want to go ahead with their nonprofit thing until the city council approves it first. And I don't know if there's a legal reason why they can't do the nonprofit thing until the city council approves it. But, you know, if they are willing to do a personal guarantee, then that would kind of solve the problem. Thank you.
I just want to clarify one thing, and that is that, when you're going to create a non-for-profit
501(c)(3), which is the non, the official non-for-profit organization, that if someone gives you dollars, you get a write-off on your taxes, you can't just say that you're raising money arbitrarily for a community, or for bike trails in a community, it's too broad. You have to have a specific reason. So, until the council votes to accept the grant, the paperwork to become incorporated as a 501(c)(3) cannot be put through. That is one of the dilemmas that we've reached, because we have a lot of people that want to give us money now, but we cannot accept a penny. We cannot open up a bank account until the first step is taken, which is to approve the grant, the awarding of the grant, you will accept the grant. Then tomorrow, we can file the paperwork with the Secretary of State, and legally go for 501(c)(3), which is what we have provided for you, all of the executed documents. So, because people would, people may just create non-for-profits, you know, you have to have a very specific reason of what you're raising money for. So, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Okay, are there any other public comments?
I just, real quick, I have known the accused for twenty-five years. Jimmy, Johnny, and Danny say they're going to raise some money. I can vouch for them, I've known them that long. They're good people. They'll do it. Just, the other organizations haven't made it. The accused said they're going to do something. That's as good as put in writing. Thank you.
My name is Charlie Martin, I live in Grand Reserve, and I actually would put my house up for collateral, because right now, it ain't worth a dime. I'm not exaggerating, I put a hundred and seventy thousand dollars down on my house five years ago. All made from money I made on other houses in Wheaton. And right now, I honestly don't think it would be worth anything, the way Grand Reserve stands in this town. It's, it's sickening. But honestly, you know what? I'd put it up. I just, I just talked to this McHugh guy. I'd put it up.
There you go, Lisa, you got your house.
My name is Ron Morris, I've lived here for forty years. I'm retired, on fixed income, like a lot of other people. When things are going, I can't afford to live here. I am like a lot of these other people. I'd like to have some sort of guarantee that it's going to be taken care of down the road. Now, the police protection, everybody has good wishes, but are they going to come through? And as I said, at that rate, I'm going to be forced to move out of town, you know, in the future, so you need to think about these things. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else, last chance, or else we're going to move on. Okay, here none, we'll move on. Public Works Committee Report. As for the Kennedy Road Shared Use ITOF Bike Grant. Our entertaining motion to accept the ITOF Bike Path Grant was on Kennedy Road Shared Use path. We have comments or questions from the council. Want to answer questions from the council? Carl?
You know, the issue's a sensitive issue, obviously, and I think the speaker spoke today, having the right idea that everybody in this council wants the bike path. The question is, can we use the taxpayers' money as a personal guarantee? I don't know where the last gentleman who spoke for the election, he didn't give his tab risk, but I represent Ward One. That is my job, that's what I like to be, and that's why I'm here. Overwhelming, the number of people who contacted me for Ward One have said no. The four out of the five people who stood up today and said no are from Ward One, and I don't know where the fifth individual went, so I, I can't say. So, my ward is heavily against the bike path, via email, via text mail, via voicemail messages that I receive as an amendment, the direction from my ward is clear. So, although I, I want this bike path, I have a bike, I drive my bike up to the bike trail to the Kian St. Charles, and everybody else, I'm not here to vote for what I want, I'm here to vote for what my constituents want. And my constituents said no.
Martin?
Oh, yes, uh, done a lot of research on this issue, talked to many residents in Ward Three, and probably forty-five out of fifty have no problem with the path, they like it, being an amenity for the city. So, least on Ward Three, the people I've talked to are exonerately ninety-five percent for it. I broke it down into pros and cons. Financially, if you look at a one point seven five million dollar project, and we have to put in three hundred and fifty thousand, that is a return on investment of about five hundred percent. Any businessperson's estimation, that's a pretty good return on investment. Public safety, it's an issue, and this would provide much-needed public safety along that road from Forty-seven to wherever it ends up, or whether I'm not ends up. I ride a motorcycle, so biking's a little too hard for me, so I don't personally care about that. For me or my family, it's for the good of the city, I'm looking at this. Three is, there's two big initiatives in our country right now. Kids are overweight, everybody's overweight, nobody's getting exercise, everybody's talking green, conserve gas. Gas is five dollars a gallon, coming shortly, we need to do things. This path would alleviate two of those problems, it would give the kids a place to ride their bikes to school, save their parents five dollars a gallon of gas driving them to school, and save a little pollution. Fourth, it's an amenity for the city that's good for economic growth and recreation. Two things which should be top priorities for any progressive growth city, people talking about their house without you down, same vote. But we need activity in the city, or we're never going to sell our house, it's going to sit here forever, less services, people are going to go elsewhere, we're all going to live here forever, we'll all be neighbors for the next fifty years. So, again, nothing against y'all, but myself too, I hope I'm somewhere nice. So, again, nothing against you all, but myself too, I hope I'm somewhere nicer than like Hawaii. The other thing, fifth rule I see is members of the community getting together behind one good issue and really working together, again, agree or not agree, you got to give people credit for getting out, spending their own time and their own money for an issue that they believe in. The only negative I could really come up with is the finances. I don't think anybody in the room or in the council would say, if a magic wand came and path was paid for, who's going to say no? And again, you can't look at it just because I don't live out on Kennedy Road, I'm not going to use it. I'm not going to donate any money or put any of my tax money. So in conclusion, after thinking about the issue long and hard, doing a lot of research, talking to residents, I encourage everyone to think about the big picture and the long-range vision of the city, not just the next two months. I'm not, again, a big green person. I don't need a path for exercise, but for the good of the entire city, I will be supporting this issue.
Anyone else? Chris? Kurt?
I also represent Ward 1. And as you could see tonight, once again, the majority of the people that stood up in opposition to this were my residents. And I can only go by several things. Number one, I'm a parent too. I've got four young children, from eight down to three years old. I like bike paths, like bike paths too. I think they're a wonderful thing. But there's one thing I made a promise when I got elected here to the United City of Yorkville. And that promise was I was going to be ultra-conservative. And every vote I've taken so far has been that way, and this is no exception. Unfortunately, going by two things. Number one, I don't like, as some of the speakers said, putting taxpayers' dollars at risk without some sort of a guarantee. And our track record as a city has been atrocious for doing that. We've been stumped over and over again by taking risks and getting stumped. And our track record is very poor. And I support the fact that we need some sort of a guarantee. But more importantly, I support the fact that my constituents overwhelmingly are against this, unless there's some sort of a guarantee going forward. And therefore, I will not be supporting this.
Rose, go ahead.
The majority of emails I receive worth for typically corresponds through email, and there are a few here. Actually, the gentleman is going to put up his house for collateral is one of our residents as well. And I also need some kind of guarantee. I realize that the 501(c) cannot be established unless the city supports it. Can Yorkville EDC collect the money until this happens? Because it's, once again, everybody's promising they're going to donate, they're going to give us funds, that everything would be okay, it's going to be covered.
Your EDC is not a 501(c)(3). It is a 501(c)(6).
But is there a way that you can collect the money somehow?
No, no. Because people want to be able to, if you're going to accept the check from someone for $1,000, they want to know they can write it off on their taxes. And quite honestly, I can't blame them. I would want to write it off on my taxes. So it has to be done the proper way.
But then again, you're asking the city to trust all of you, that we would give that money, and there's no guarantee.
But yet, I, well, I would have said that, but the four of us that are involved with Push for the Path are for, as I said, people that are embedded in Yorkville. And it's not like the four of us are people that you've never seen before. We're people who live here, who work here, our businesses are here. And I would hope that you would have faith in us. And then when we pull together all of these people, friends, neighbors, coworkers, individuals from the school, the athletic organizations, it's a wealth, it is absolute wealth. It's a jewel what we have here, the resources that we have within our community. And I think you need to have faith. I think that, I believe that we will raise the money in shorter amount of time than is required, and I think we'll raise more. And I feel that I am being realistic. So that is the chart that I gave you. I think the chart that I showed you was something like $380,000. And I believe that we can do it. I know that, again, if everybody in this room that's here to support this, if you raise your little orange flag and show everybody who we are. And when people are here with charts that are willing to raise the chart tonight, that we will be happy to accept the chart, and we will use it to open up the bank account tomorrow. We also trust the community developers that came here.
We're not developers. We're... But you're asking this council to use our taxpayers as collateral because they come back to them and they may have to pay for this. And you're saying, trust? Then I do. I trust the community, I trust the people. But yet, I'm representing a very large ward, and as several people said, they did not have an increase of any kind in their taxes or any other infrastructure, whatever, or a bike path. In the future, in two or three years, they don't want an increase. They don't want to be paying. And I know that you say you can guarantee, but I too, that's something in writing. I really want something here.
Well, I think by creating a, not by putting our reputation...
The time for public comment is over. This is very close to the break now. Okay, so, it's up to us to discuss this and go on.
And again, I want the council to think about, five years from now, if we don't have this money, I mean, we have to pay for River Road, we have other expenses coming up, large expenses.
Like your medical?
And... And we have to take care of those expenses first, and we have to consider those expenses in the future.
Thank you, Rose. You want to start?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm one of those that said I wanted the money upfront. I prefer to have it that way, but realistically, I understand that's not going to happen. You can't start collecting until we give you our approval. And based what I've heard here tonight, I'm going to put faith in this organization.
Any comments? Anyone else want to say? Sam?
Yeah, I would like to say that the people that are here that are working for Push for the Path, this is completely different than a developer coming to us and promising something. I think we, these are our residents, these are the people that are here, and I don't think it's right to even compare them to a developer coming in. And not that you can't... These are the people that live here, work here, have their businesses here, and love their community and want it to be a better place. Not allowing them to do this is not going to get our roads fixed. The money's not going to come here to fix our roads. It would grate if they could, but it's not going to happen. It's not going to make our balance bigger if we don't allow them to do this. I have full faith in them and they'll do it. I also would like to say that for economic development, everyone here has said that, you know, their houses aren't worth anything, their taxes are high. The only way to make your taxes lower is to expand your tax base. The only way to expand your tax base is to have people coming into this town, businesses coming into this town will come here when we have people here. But people are looking for recreation, they're looking for amenities, they're looking for a place to raise their family, they're looking for that. That's what they want. And I have heard all along, people on this council tell me, that's not what they want. They want the roads fixed. Yes, they do. I agree with that 100%. But they also want to come here, and they want to have a bike trail, they want to have a rec center, they want to have good schools, and that is what these people here are saying. And I think that we need to figure this out and allow them to do it.
All of them up here, please.
Well, you know, in our world, sometimes we get so wrapped up in all the negatives in life. And I think this was a big night, if there was an accident there. And I drove down that road, I worked at Grand Reserve School, it's terrible. And a lot of people always say, oh, don't let me down with your vote, Jackie. You know, we voted you in. I'm going to ask that of you. I'm going to take a leap of faith, I'm going to vote for this. I'm going to ask all of you, don't let me down.
All of them up here?
Not much more needs to be said, that there's four in favor right now, three against. The mayor's obviously in favor.
What is that?
I've had many reservations about this issue. Many people know that I was not in favor of the referendums. I was not in favor of additional taxes for bike trails. My position was, if the city can manage it within our budget, that's where we can do it. The referendums failed clearly. We're beyond that, that's done, we're moving forward. This is an opportunity that we have. There is support from the community. And even as Lynn knows, I've talked to her multiple times, and I've questioned her for more information because this is where my reservation is, is it is kind of a trust issue here. We are going to take a leap of faith on this. I think this is good for the community, even though I have my reservations on the callback of the city's position, where we have to be cautious and guarded of where we're at. This is an issue that the residents want, especially in Ward 3. As Marty said, Ward 3 does want this. Even though this trail does not go into our ward, I was elected for my constituents, and my position also is that we have to consider the greater good of the community. And I will be voting in favor of this.
Okay, I don't think much more needs to be said. Roll call, please.
Pat?
Aye.
Muns?
Aye.
Spears?
Nay.
Pelosimo?
Nay.
Funkhouser?
Aye.
Nelschuski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Nay.
Bush and Pitts?
Okay, that's it. The motion is actually in three parts, so we're going to go through it two more times. Stick around for five more minutes. I entertain a motion to approve a local agency agreement for federal participation between the United City of Yorkville and the State of Illinois Department of Transportation and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute. The move.
Second.
Time for questions under this one. Roll call, please.
Spears?
Nay.
Pelosimo?
Nay.
Funkhouser?
Aye.
Nelschuski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Nay.
Pat?
Aye.
Muns?
Aye.
Lastly, I have a motion to approve a preliminary engineering services agreement for federal participation between the United City of Yorkville and Engineering Enterprises, Inc. and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute. The move.
Second.
Do we have comments or questions on this one? Roll call, please.
Pelosimo?
Nay.
Funkhouser?
Aye.
Nelschuski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Nay.
Pat?
Aye.
Muns?
Aye.
Spears?
Nay.
Thank you all for coming out today. Everybody's walking the stage for President Pence. Hi guys, ready to call the committee back and order? Okay, next time you attend, there is the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. So move. Roll call, please.
Colosimo?
Aye.
Nilsjuski?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Muntz? Funkhouser?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Okay, next we have no minutes for approval. Moving on to mayor's report. Um, first item is River Road Bridge Intergovernmental Agreement Update. It is an informational item right now. As you may have read in the May Cry Digital County Highway Committee meeting, I talked to them about the importance of getting the River Road Bridge open and talked to them about maybe putting some skin in the game and possibly folding us a loan for some of the money upfront. Because this is a regional project, it's important to get the county's residents to write this item. That would really help us on our cash flow. Coming up with $600,000 in one fiscal year, although we haven't funded it, this would really help our cash flow. So I would definitely like to publicly thank Bob Davidson, chairman of the Highway Committee, John Shaw who was there and was supportive of it, Dane Kukel who was there and supportive of it, and Nancy Martin who was very supportive of it. I was a little surprised by Suzanne Trell, who was a big note. I was really surprised, because I know she's still in District One, I thought she was supposed to represent for the board call. But I don't know what her deal was. I heard that she moved out of District, maybe she doesn't really care about our problems in District One anymore, but I'm not sure. But I'll look for questions, if anyone has questions on this. What we're looking at is a six-year loan of up to $600,000, 0% interest. George?
Where are we going to pull those funds from, Gary, out of the budget?
Pull the fund, there is $600,000 currently budgeted for fiscal year 13 for the River Road Bridge program. So if you choose to move forward with it and the county approves the intergovernmental agreement as well, basically you'll just stick that $600,000 and spread it over the next six fiscal years.
Okay. And then one other question?
Yes, sir.
The preliminary engineering and design and construction, will that be bid out for competitive pricing or is that automatically going to be, we're going to use our engineering program?
I'm sorry, is that phase one or phase two?
Yes.
That's already been?
Already been done. Right. So there's no engineering that's going to be completed off?
Hmm, okay. There will be construction engineering as part of the actual, final part of it. It's inspections, it's uh...
The state bids the project out though, right? The state is bidding it out?
Who's going to do that?
The state is bidding the construction portion of the project and then we are providing the construction engineering services for you for that project.
So you'll be the engineer, is that included in what we, in our standard contract with you or is that outside the scope of what we agreed?
It's going to be outside, the net agreement, along with the joint agreement, I believe, was approved a couple meetings ago.
Excellent. Are we, are we going to look for competitive pricing on engineering? Are we going to, because obviously it's outside the scope of what we're trying to doing and I'm...
It's already been approved. You've already approved the engineering contract for EEI.
Right, I know, but it's outside of the scope of that, correct?
No, not at all.
That's what I asked for, is...
You've approved a supplemental contract for engineering services for the River Road Bridge program with the, so they've already been slated as construction engineers.
Chris.
Is our city attorney reviewed this?
This isn't the actual agreement, right? This is not the actual agreement. So we're just bringing concept to the council first, see if the council's okay with it, and we will bring back the agreement. We'll get proof hours and the Highway Committee.
And the attorney?
Oh yeah. Yeah, can the oral draw the agreement up, correct?
Yeah. The county board directed us because they didn't want to even entertain it until they had formal go-ahead from us.
Right. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I actually spoke about this with Chairman Davidson a couple times and I do appreciate your willingness to work with us, Lance Wilson, Mr. Cole, Courtney Martin, and Mr. Shaw. I think it's a no-brainer, obviously a loan with 0% interest that can help our cash flow in the next six years. I think it's the best interest of the taxpayers and I appreciate the county's cooperation with us. Obviously it benefits both of our residents and I hope it's the first step in improved relations of the county.
You're welcome, Karen. Anyone else? Okay, so this will come back once we are ready for the agreement. Next under mayor's report is an amended collective bargaining agreement between the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 150 Public Employees Division, and United City of Yorkville. We have a motion for that, don't we? So I will entertain a motion to approve that agreement, as I just said.
So move. Second.
And the deal with this is there is some language in our drug testing policy in the union contract that jives with federal DOC language. So the union has a disagreeable to the language change. All we do is prove it to the union or prove it, so move down. Have any questions?
Just a question. Why wasn't that reviewed, the drug testing policy reviewed by our administrator, our policy administrator, before we entered into an agreement with Local 150 instead of being born about this after we've already agreed upon it?
Yeah, Marty, you probably answered, but I think it's some new language, new regulations from the fudgs.
It's relatively new. We did have our policy administrator review it probably about a year, a year and a half ago, might have been two years ago, somewhere between a year or two ago, when we were doing our employee manual amendments. So since then, they've updated it and before we approved it, we didn't have our policy administrator review it again. So she caught it after the fact.
Any other comments, questions?
I'm going to vote against it simply for the fact that I voted against the actual, the initial agreement. So the amendment to the same agreement that I voted against, I'm going to still be voting against, so.
And I feel the same way.
Okay. I don't want to feel the same way before court, but... Other candidates or questions? Roll call, please.
Funkhouser?
Aye.
Nilsjuski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Nay.
Pat?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
Nay.
Colosimo?
Nay.
Yes.
For court?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to appointment of American Disability Coordinator. I will entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Peter Rados as ADA Coordinator. So move. Is Mr. Rados here? No, he's not. Well, he jumped at the opportunity to take this position. Any other questions? Who did this before? Our previous building inspector Paul was able to follow it. So we didn't have one for the time that was going Paul. We never gave it to the...
We never formally appointed them, but they've been acting in that capacity. It's a standard code official settlement.
Roll call.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Colosimo?
Aye.
Funkhouser?
Aye.
Nilsjuski?
Aye.
Lucian Paces?
Next item under mayor's report is another informational item. It is an update from the recreation facility alternatives ad hoc committee. And I will turn it over to Mr. Funkhouser, shared by committee.
All right. Quick update on this. The recreation facility alternatives ad hoc committee met for the third time on February 13th. Background on this, the mayor directed this committee forum to determine what other options existed beyond Plan B, the purchase of the rec center. Me also allowed for the public, allowed the public additional opportunities to speak and discuss the alternatives. Collectively, there were only three residents that attended the meetings period. The committee consisted of three council members, two park board members. Including those meetings, I'm here presenting this, we have it charted in our packet. During that last meeting, the committee solidified four alternatives, including frozen cons regarding each. The materials on the packet state that I will present recommendations. Actually, I want to clarify that, the committee did not make a recommendation on any of the four alternatives. Rather, we're providing those alternatives to the council as a tool in the decision of whether or not to acquire the rec center. After the final meeting of the ad hoc committee, the findings for the committee were reviewed at park board at that time, and they did make a recommendation. Their recommendations, I'll just go through them real quick with their comments. A, purchase, which was the most logical, they said, based on price point. The second is C, new building, their main concern, that's two, four times more costly. Next is D, the school partnership. The issues were the cost, requires more cash, scholarship, shared square footage, and potential scheduling conflict. Their least likely option was leasing of other options. But they did want to make it very clear that it was a resounding purchase option is what they were looking for on that one. But in the chart, options A, B, C, and D, A being the rec center purchase, you can see the pros there being the fact that it has a membership base, it's near budget neutral, no initial outlay, location, and it goes on for the pros, the cons. They were identified as age, location, location meaning that it's a prime piece of property. There's a deal to be negotiated, we don't know the price on it yet, we're losing taxes and we're locked in there. The next option was leasing new space. Coming in, it costs $12 to $20 a square foot. That was based on information Lynn gave the check provided to us in one of our committee meetings. Pros on this was we would be able to have a blank space, a brand-new custom location, flexibility, one or two-year leases, and it's, the timing is a pro because we can work with that. Cons, this is a big list, limited uses, lots of services, possible customer base problems, may not have parking, equipment outlay, no ownership, size of available spaces, lack of local options, since some of the places we had considered previously have been taken off the market. Unknown budget, and we would then possibly be competing with the existing, or what would revert back is Route 40, or 1247. So that's an extensive con, and that one has the, one of the least likely options. The third option was C, building new. Staff was able to obtain some information on facilities, proposals that have been put out there by architects and some costs, so that's where those numbers come from. Pros on this are the fact that there's city land available, we wouldn't have to acquire land, gives us an ultimate blank canvas, limited maintenance, since it's a new building, that is something you wouldn't have. And then a couple of the, one of the stretches was excitement, but that new building, new opportunity, there is some excitement there. And then also a pro is we would have ownership in a facility. Cons, very expensive, land building, equipment, new customer base, would have to be developed, may not be able to bring those over from the existing facility. Timeline, the time it would take to build a facility, may not drive well with our existing lease, we may have an overlap before we have to come up with a future own solution. Bonding, referendum, operational budget, and again, competition with 1247. D, that's our last option, school partnership. Pros were that it was the best use of tax knowledge. So, community partnership, in some instances, we'd be getting more facility for less money, or less city money, I should say. Increasing, could potentially increase customer base with the joint use there, limited maintenance budget, since it would be shared. It's excitement, and there's also some renewed community trust on this one. Cons, timing, we're not quite sure what's going to happen with the school, with their build out of their fieldhouse, that's where this is all contingent on. We don't know where they're at yet. They're selecting architects, I remember that school board meeting last night, I know that they've narrowed that down, but they're still at the point of our selecting architects. It's also affected our cons, we're involving another entity, scheduling intergovernmental problems, unknown operational budget, potential referendum again, competing with 147. And then, options B, C, and D, one issue that was pointed out by staff is that this opens up a blank checkbook need, more or less. When we stepped into the rec center, we had what we thought was a relatively good idea of the finances. We're stepping into an issue that's even greater than that, if we were going with any of those three, due to the fact that we don't exactly know what's expected, we don't know how many customers would come with us to a new facility, a new leased facility, or a school partnership facility. So those are the options that were developed out of the committee. And it's there for the rest of the council to mull over as we're looking at our decision on that thing.
Thank you, Chris. And again, this is just an update, we'll plenty time to debate it, when a purchase agreement with rec center comes forward. Next on the agenda is, when we fold off the consent agenda, we'll move to public works First, I'll entertain a motion for resolution to become a USCPA water center promotional partner and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
So move.
Second.
So it's number seven on the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
I told it just for two reasons. One, on the resolution itself, water sense is a spell. And the other question I had was, it's my understanding of this program, I guess you might be able to help me out here on this, two things. One, this generally applies to fixtures and that inside the home type products, and that those products cannot be sole source, is that correct? Anybody know what that means? If it don't?
Sole source is more like...
Meaning, if someone has a product that doesn't have competition, meaning...
I think this is more like an energy stock. It's more a promotional, educational tool.
Okay, because I know there's certain products that are approved through this, Eric, and I know, I understand they're indoor type products.
Correct.
And I guess I was told, and I just wanted to double check, those products that are approved through this program cannot be a sole source type product, and I don't know if that's the case or not. Just had some questions before.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so. I think this is more, like I said, this is more educational and public relations to get this word out.
Yeah, it's a good program, I support it. The other thing I had, we talk about these rebates, how does that rebate work? Does anybody?
That would be through the EPA.
Does the EPA rebate?
I don't know the specifics of, but I believe it's all done through the EPA. We are just almost like a tool to say that we support this.
Okay. Okay, so no rebate should be coming back through the city, it will all be done through another entity?
To my knowledge.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on water sense? Roll call, please.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Colosimo?
Nay.
Funkhouser?
Aye.
Nilsjuski?
Aye.
Lucian Paces?
Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve Kendall Marketplace improvements, change order number two, authorize increases in the amount of seed, $20,000, and authorize the mayor, authorize the mayor to execute. Second. Questions on this one?
Okay, Gary, I called this one as well, and I apologize for being my absence at the last public works committee meeting. I have some questions about this I wanted to ask before we approved it from the board committee. Originally, when this came to public works, we were told that we asked Wilkinson not to seed until the spring, and that was just a decision that we made. And no one had mentioned any sort of a change or a baseball diamond plans. And now, this I see has basically a baseball field, and I want to know, number one, was that always, was there always a baseball field, park site plans that we knew of?
When the park was designed on, it was probably 2006. It was actually in a bunch to Cannibal Ridge, and so that, when we try to join the parks together so we can offer more facilities at one location. So the baseball design is actually, we have plans from Chappie to have the baseball design on the one hand, and then the existing park on the other. So it has been designed that way, and that's how it was approved by Park Board to be built, so.
My follow-up question to that is, if we knew about it, then why didn't we bid it out that way originally, when we bid this project out, instead of coming afterwards? out that way originally, when we bid this project out, instead of coming afterwards with the change orders?
It was, I know that we had discussed it with Brad, and at that time, he wasn't sure if we could do that, we were, I believe they were already in the process of bidding out the work, so we couldn't change it at that time. And we later met a staff, and Brad said, sure, we can look at it, and we proceeded with it at that time. So it is, you know, something that we didn't do initially, but that when, it kind of happens sooner or later, the funds are available now, it's not our funds, you know, it's a good time for us to actually do the improvement as planned.
Okay, and then, piggybacking on what you just said, Laura, we're using twenty thousand dollars of money out of the letter of credit for this project, and my understanding of the letter of credit is basically, those funds are used for, you know, future public infrastructure improvements, upgrades, fees, that sort of thing. And it's also my understanding, can you shake your head, no?
No, this is a project fund. We actually collected all of the funds in cash, as a result of the SSAs, and released on the letter of credit.
We did, Kathy, but I thought, when we do a park site, the developer that comes in pays for that, we're not taking money out of our letter of credit to do that ahead of time.
There isn't a letter of credit, there is a project fund to cover all these expenses.
The project fund?
Yeah, there was a letter of credit at one time, but before the proposal occurred, we resolved all of that, and actually took the proceeds from some special service area that they're responsible for, we created a project fund so that we can be assured the money is sitting there, and our finance director is empowered to draw down on any cost related to, so we're protected on this.
I understand there was a letter of credit, and we took those funds, and now we have a project fund, six and one half dozen the other, it's a project fund now, but why would we want to take twenty thousand dollars in that project fund, that we potentially use later on for something that may have to be done there, because this could sit for a substantial amount of time in the future without a developer, that twenty thousand dollars we may have to use, why would we take that now and sink it into a baseball diamond and a sledding hill, when that would be something that a developer would pay for when they come in?
Simple answer is that, you know, you have different specifications, different land specifications, you can tell the developer, as part of the plan, to do a different grading plan. So, to me, it seems like this is more a matter of fact, developer doesn't exist anymore, and we missed our own bidding deadline to be able to get this particular type of grading plan in there, and then we figured it out after the fact. So, you know, this would have been something that on-site, we would have given the developer a grading plan for the site, and said, we need a sled hill, and we need this area to be clay, rather than it being whatever the standard slope is for a park site in grass.
And to add to that, I typically follow that process, and then we take ownership, and we start mowing it and maintaining it immediately, which is a benefit for the developer, and it's a benefit for us. If not, we make that developer maintain that area for three years until there's a good stand of grass, if they do it to their original plans, we come back later and do the improvement anyway. So, at this point, it's usually a win-win for the developer and the city, and that's why we work with them, but we didn't have the option because there, yeah, there's no like developer.
And we don't want to play it safe and wait, and keep that twenty thousand dollars in our project fund until we get a developer that will pay for that?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Colosimo?
Aye.
Funkhouser?
Aye.
Lushuski?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Okay, next is Route Forty-Seven improvement, Route Seventy-One, Kate Farm Road, I'll entertain a motion to authorize staff to send a response to I.D.R. President and the Home Office of the E.I.M. Mayor Brad Sanderson, dated February sixteen, two thousand and twelve. For who?
Hi, Duber, welcome here, Gary. I had quite a few questions, once again, I was at the public works meeting, so I apologize if this was answered within committee, but I want to make sure we're right, because I understand it better. Number one, what's the ramifications for denying or approving this now, related to future obligations for the city when it comes to the sidewalk placement south of Saravanas?
Well, we're in phase, beginning of phase one, so based on our path history, this is kind of the first step, we tell I.D., what your plans show, what you want, and then they'll come to us at the end of phase, middle of phase two, for a letter of commitment, so knowing their timeline on this, we're probably three or four years off from that, probably, middle of phase two.
Yeah, they don't really have a commitment for phase two yet, but I'd say in the two to four years, probably.
Okay, so they don't have funding for phase two?
No.
So, okay, and typically, direction has been that as long as we notify them by the end of phase one, or before phase two, that there has not been any requests for reimbursement of funds on their behalf, because they haven't actually started doing the design.
Correct, they're not, they're not.
So do we have to, do we have to do this now, if they haven't begun doing any engineering for this?
Yes, they're going to do public hearings, they're going to start doing design plans, they're going to prep basically documents for a letter of commitment down the road, and so they're asking now for our direction on where we would like sidewalks, like paths, lighting, et cetera.
Okay. The city's in staff's reasoning for denying sidewalks to the south side of my ward via a major commercial area versus approving a bike path?
Part of the reasoning is there is a county parcel that would have to cross, so the county would also agree to continue the sidewalk, and then our actual connection is via the bike trail up to Seventy-One, and then over to that commercial area, that way you're not crossing a major road without any sort of pedestrian safety, and we already have part of it existing, so it's saving the city money, because that trail connection from Windnet Ridge up through Ray Tree, by Country Hills, and over on Seventy-One to start approved, is mostly funded, or existing.
If and when we were to ever develop that area, if that area were to be developed, would there be potential for that developer to put in sidewalk then, or if we deny this now, it's a done deal?
Sure.
This is just saying we don't want it included in the site, if somebody were to come and develop, we were actually required of.
Good, so it will be sidewalk there?
If it's developed.
If it's developed, good, good.
On the city.
On the city portion.
Right. Good, as long as, because I think if it is developed, we need sidewalk. Second question I had was on item number three, which is the school district's projection for new schools. How is that relevant to all this, just from my own knowledge?
Traffic management, you know, with a new high school in the south of Seventy-One, that would put a huge demand on traffic during peak hours, so that's why, is why they hit up curiosity.
So it changed the way they do turn lanes, or?
Perhaps.
Right away.
Okay. How about the lighting, where is that proposed lighting?
According to, according to state policy, you are to provide, as recommended, you provide lighting at any transitional areas, they are transitioning from urban section to a rural section around the metro, and anywhere there is a raised median, which would be from the metro all the way south to Kate Farm, at least according to the guideline in Springfield, you would have to provide lighting along that stretch as well. So it's fairly significant amount of lighting, we took it, located, developed some real rough cost estimates, and it's, you know, to the tune of over a million dollars worth of lighting.
So it's all, the raised medians and that, the lighting, we're only talking about a metro, there's no other areas that we're denying?
From a metro south to Kate Farm, the limits of this project.
And then, the last question I had was on the ditch versus the storm sewer, where is the proposed open ditch storm sewer plan?
No plans, yeah, no plans, detailed plans have been provided, they are proposing urban section from Route Seventy-One down to a metro, so that's your curve and gutter, so you will have structures along the roadway, and then storm sewers carrying the storm water to and from. They were generally looking for whether or not the city would be interested in open ditches and eliminating storm sewers where possible, just a general statement, there's no detailed plans at this point.
And in the open ditch versus the storm sewer, if we obviously, it's said that we're more interested in the storm sewer, that's obviously a very cost to us, so we're at this time electing not to.
Maintenance, maintenance.
Maintenance, cost of maintenance. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I have a question on item number four, should we be a little more specific, and on the proposed lighting, should we cut to a minimum?
That would be more or less the intersections, I would say, like at a metro, and at Walker, and at Kate Farm. The main thrust of this response was the fact of the median lighting, it was a tremendous cost, and it would be our cost to bear not only the installation, but electricity.
But would if I.D. interprets that there's the lighting that they originally wanted, I mean, could we, should we be specific, so, for the city's sake?
Sure, we could add some additional text to clear that up, sure, not a problem.
Thank you.
Should we motion for amendment?
Yes. These are just general questions.
Yeah, we should want some additional language, right?
So then, don't, yeah, would you prevent a motion to approve this add with changes as suggested?
Anyone else? Okay, so we have ordered a motion to approve this letter, and request of changes. Roll call, please.
So the motion? Spears?
Aye.
Colosimo?
Aye.
Funkhouser?
Aye.
Lushuski?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
We have no admin committee report, no public safety committee report, no admin committee report. Park Board, I will entertain a motion to reward a base bid for the rainwater park, the charity's trans paving, to bridge paving in the amount, not to exceed fifteen thousand one hundred and eight dollars and forty-four cents. So.
Second.
Any other questions on this one? As you mentioned, all permeable neighbors?
In the parking.
In the parking. Any other questions?
They went here, what item are on here?
Park Board, on entry, entry parking, paving, and award. Roll call, please.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Colosimo?
Aye.
Funkhouser?
Aye.
Lushuski?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
We have a planning commission report?
No report.
CBA?
No report.
No city council report, city clerk's report?
No report.
City clerk's report, community committee liaison report. Yes, Spears.
Sorry, I have one.
Don't underpass.
I recently attended the KenCom executive board meeting, and the board approved the purchase of ten computer workstations, seventy displays, and thirty mice. These computer workstations will be used as new CAD workstations in the lower level. The existing workstations are now five years old and beginning to see some minor problems. The existing workstation in KenCom will be cleaned up and used in less critical roles. Board approved a quote received from CDW-G not to exceed twenty-seven thousand dollars. Several years ago, KenCom installed busy light displays at each console to provide a visual indication of when a telecommunications is on the phone, on the radio, has received a fire dispatch, or is away from their position. With the expansion of the vocal level, KenCom needs to purchase an additional four sets of busy light display hardware. The board approved a quote from Mercury Systems of Naperville, who supply the current displays, the quote is in the amount of three thousand dollars, not for eight dollars. Previously, the KenCom executive board approved two point three three four million in capital projects. Funding for these projects is to come from the reserve equipment fund, which at the time these projects were approved, contained two point two million. Several of these projects are underway, and it will be several months before the bulk of the money is needed to pay for these projects. Additionally, several of these projects are projected, are projected to come in under budget. The current fund balance in the surcharge budget is six hundred and sixteen dollars, or six hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. There are no significant expenses coming from this budget in the next couple of months. In order to completely fund the anticipated needs to date in the capital equipment fund, Director Ferris recommended transferring an additional two hundred thousand dollars from the surcharge budget into the capital equipment reserve fund. This transfer is a portion of the amount due to be transferred into the capital equipment fund this fiscal year. Director Ferris discussed the alarm monitoring contract that will expire on March thirteenth. Currently, KenCom only monitors forty-five alarms. This number has significantly been reduced in the last year, as more customers have moved to other central station alarm monitoring points. Most of the remaining buildings on their alarm board are public buildings and a few banks. It costs KenCom more money to operate the alarm board than it generates in revenue. After extensive discussion by the board, the board agreed to end the contract and give immediate notice to the remaining customers. Total calls for all departments for the month of January were nine thousand four hundred and one calls. Total nine-one-one calls were two thousand nine hundred and eighty-six. Wireless nine-one-one statistics for the month of January twenty-twelve represent seventy-four percent of all nine-one-one calls received. And the board also approved payment of the operations bills in the amount of seven thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixteen cents for the month of February, and approved surcharge bills in the amount of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-two cents. And then, the board was also informed, Kendall County was going to pay for the building, the renovation downstairs where they're moving KenCom, however, they discovered that they can't give KenCom the money. What they acted, what they did is create a lease, and the building is going to be leased, and I did give that to the mayor right now, and our attorney, I believe, is going to be looking at that, but it's going to be a ten-year lease for the lower level, and they just, oh, and they have some different points in here regarding their heating and air conditioning, and the lease agreement. That's all I have. Was this always understood? No. The county was going to pay for it. The county was going to allow KenCom to use the basements for free. Now, they're only paying twenty-five thousand dollars a year, a hundred thousand dollars a year.
That came up before, though.
Yeah, it came up before, as far as, it said it went to an embark, and be a little clear on that one.
There was always discussion of, you know, the type of rental payment, I didn't know whether it was going to come about and end up.
No, I understood it was going to be the cost of utilities, is what I understood. Well, I believe they're going to now pay for the utilities, and actually, these are probably the discussion at the meetings that Yorkville was not a part of. So, I mean, I don't know what they discussed previously. Yeah.
Any other community liaisons reports, George?
The YBSD met last week, as people may know, but just to report, and executed a special meeting to execute the Blackberry Dam removal. So they have signed that agreement with the IDNR, and they are executing-
There is no longer any reservoir fishery management for REN, Shelbyville, Carlisle, REN. There are only eleven presently instead of twenty-four to produce fish at Jake Wolf Fishery, Fish Hatchery, and half staff or less at Little Grassy and LaSalle Hatcheries as well. Over eighteen million is needed in basic maintenance and upgraded, and upgrading within the now thirty-year-old hatchery system at Jake Wolf, Little Grassy, and LaSalle Hatcheries. The Division of Fisheries has been, has but one person under the age of forty. What about the rest of the DNR? Pretty much the same story, really. Heading into the late nineteen nineties, the DNR staff numbered around two thousand two hundred. Today, that number has dramatically fallen to eleven hundred plus, with the retirement of many more baby boomers close at hand. At the same time, that number of DNR worker bees has fallen fifty percent. The number of DNR top executive staff has increased substantially. When the workforce numbered two thousand two hundred, there was a director and two deputy directors. Today, with only one thousand one hundred employees, there's a director, director, assistant director, and three deputy directors. A chief of staff, an assistant to the director, and a plethora of office directors. Dr. Willer Kilmstrup, nineteen seventy-nine, once observed that patronage. He gave several bullet points. Tends to foster non-professionalism, permits inefficient use of scarce dollars, hampers the role of leadership, inhibits freedom to address issues honestly and openly, tends to negate long-range planning based on biological principles, creates an atmosphere of insecurity, and promotes pot-licking in the interest of personal survival. I would just add that in my view, it's criminal that if that executive staff is thriving and causing in part the occurrence of a dangerously lean field staff. Everyone realizes the amount of general revenue funds available for state government has shrunk dramatically in recent years. But why are the poor functions and responsibilities of the DNR, conservation and management of wildlife and aquatic resources, enforcing applause protecting such, also so anemic funding-wise? After all, isn't the wildlife and fish fund where all hunting and fishing licenses income is deposited? A special fund which can only be utilized for funding the core functions of the DNR? Guess again, the two thousand five, the twenty-five, the twenty-five-year annual payment of one point four million a year to pay the expansion of the fish hatchery system was completed, although an additional one point four million of the fees anglers pay annually for fishing licenses was now available for other division, division of fishery needs. Fisheries did not receive one penny of this money. Resident fishing licenses fees were increased in two thousand and ten from twelve fifty to fourteen fifty, but none of the monies generated from the increase went to the Division of Fisheries. It's simply a matter of diversion. As general revenue monies began to dry up the past decade, monies from the wildlife and fish fund were directed toward programs that had not historically been utilized for. Seven years ago, there was forty-five million balance in the wildlife and fish fund. Today, there is virtually zero balance with negative balance just on the horizon. Why does the director of DNR allow that? Well, the sad fact is that the director is really not the director at all. To truly manage, one must have control of the budget personnel. The director of the DNR, the director of DNR in actuality controls neither one. The budget and personnel directors within the DNR answer not to the DNR director, but rather to the governor's office of management and budget and the Department of Central Management Services respectively. What this all adds up to is that, that those really in charge of the DNR haven't a clue regarding what conservation of aquatic wildlife, natural heritage, and forest resources consists of, or why it is such a critical, of such a critical importance. The current ineptitude exhibited within the executive branch surely has no equal with state government. Right? Wrong? One only has to look to the legislative lands, branch. It seems that the defining characteristic of legislators these days is that they don't know how to play well with others. They are so busy fighting amongst themselves and concentrating on getting reelected that they are incapable of addressing the, the egregious problems which exist in the executive branch of our government. So back to the initial question, is there any hope? And it goes on, you know, I guess I don't want to read the whole thing, but basically, it's, I think it's a pretty good article. Did everybody get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, we turned down the dam removal on this side. There was no reason why we had to enter into an agreement to obligate ourselves to maintaining and, and potentially revamping and locking ourselves into an agreement that we've been locked into before. Obviously, the YBSD went forward without us anyway and we weren't locked into any sort of an obligation. I think it was a good move on the city's part, so I thank everybody for that vote.
Anyone else with layers on your reports? Community reports?
Yes, sir. Two quick ones. The twenty-third of February, I attended the Aurora Area Convention and Business Bureau, the first meeting that I attended. Good meeting. It's good to meet everybody that was in there. I think this is a good opportunity for us. Very little business at that meeting. They had just launched their, the new brochure and so that's out, those have been, are in the process of being distributed. And one comment after the meeting, I had the opportunity to talk to Jeremy Dale Berman. In, in our discussion, I had the chance to kind of give a reason why I was there and one of the points was that I was there to make sure we're getting our bank card up. And I think this, we'll have a good opportunity to kind of push, make sure we're getting what we should out of this organization. I think it has good potential, I don't think we've seen it yet, but hopefully with some good direction, we can get some benefit pretty well out of this investment. So. As that, and then the large one, attended school board meeting last night. Real quick statistics of what they had, treasurer's report, one point eight million dollars in revenues, five point seven million dollars expensive, expenses, thirty-four, thirty-four point nine, six, six million dollars in fund backs. They had significant personnel changes, several retirements, transfers, and hires. Quite a bit going on in their movements, a couple of new hires, basically athletic positions. Their big thing that they discussed were their summer school programs. They are moving forward with their high school programs that they have for summer school, creating some new challenges and new opportunities that their K through seven program is still being looked at. They haven't decided how exactly they're going to run those, so those are still moving forward until they can get some more information out of those. They also, they discussed their flexible spending account, something that they have as an option, they're going to enact that, that is a program they have to help them flex the amount of their deductible, basically. Comes in a fee to the school district, but overall should be savings for everybody and it's already part of the package. Their big thing that they did, which is a substantial increase for the school district, was their increase in their internet connection. Their increase in their speeds dramatically from one hundred megabits per second to five hundred, so it actually speeds them up. It's a preference for them to be able to combine all their servers into one system throughout the district so that they can house all their data centrally and be able to manage it efficiently, more efficiently. So that was, everything that comes in an additional cost of one thousand dollars a month. However, they're already paying sixteen thousand dollars, so it's not really a big increase in price for what they're getting back out of it. Last thing I was brought up was their super tens report. Dr. Wakeley is very proud of the wrestling team, so is their staff and their board, they did very well down at State, second place. Dr. Wakeley's comment was they were the only private school, or that they are only second grade to a private school. They're the only public school that rated that highly, so they're very proud of that based on their competition that had. They also met with five architects that they selected out of sixteen, so they're moving forward on their plans, they have that in place. They're going to be meeting with each of those firms soon and then they're going to narrow that down to two or three and they'll have those present to the school board with some open-ended ideas for the project of the fieldhouse and their school improvements, the pre-so hallway spacing, classroom space, so they're looking to hopefully have by doing somebody selected and moving forward with actual plans, certain plans.
I want to follow up on the district bureau meeting. I know Chris went to that for the first time and the chairman of that, Dale Berman you mentioned, he is also North of Aurora, North of Aurora, North of President. So I seen him that evening at the Metro West meeting and he was quite impressed with all of the Buckausser. I believe he called him a real go-getter.
One of my questions, are they two, you said their new brochures are out? How are they distributed? How many people in Yorkville can get their hands on those? Or where do they put these? I haven't seen one a lot, so I don't know.
Part of that, I know Mary Hunterburner, Hunterburner had been part of that, she had distributed a lot of those, but that was through hometown hello and so that was distributed to newer residents. The state hall has some, but this is something that we need to deal with, how do we push this agenda? They're currently, they're working on a revised website which will help to improve their visibility and market themselves online. Yes, the brochures, that is something, that is an issue, how do you get that out there? At this point, I don't have a solid solution on that, but it is something we do need to address.
I represent one of the, mentioned your business bureaus. Those are actually never really given to the residents, they're put in the hometowns and put in places to tell them about us and where we're at. So I'm excited to hear.
I have two great foot items I wanted to announce, that two of my sons and I have answered the call. We've answered the call to be shavees. We have teamed up to have our head shaved.
Oh, no!
Oh, yes.
Oh!
We are going to stand in solidarity with kids fighting cancer, but more importantly, to raise money to find cures. This is the St. Baldrix fundraiser, it's going to be March seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day, at Rosati's Pizza. If you don't know about St. Baldrix, their mission statement is, the St. Baldrix Foundation is a volunteer-driven charity committed to funding the most promising research to find cures for childhood cancers and give survivors long and healthy lives. So I'd like to encourage all of you to support us with a donation for the St. Baldrix Foundation. This volunteer-driven charity funds more childhood cancer research grants than any organization except the US government. Our team is Team Mayor G and you can donate online at stbaldrix.org. You can also register to be a shaver yourself.
That's okay. It's kind of a bad.
I'll hope for the.
First, that sugar be coated.
Yes.
Um, I actually believe county board, county session, it's not.
I was thinking George, but he's close enough already.
It doesn't go by kid group, Rob.
You'd be even more intimidating, Paul. Carl, Paul's in bow tie. There you go.
I'll invite you to check to the mayor.
Ow!
I encourage you all to.
Team Mayor G.
Team Mayor G, yes. Next is, I mentioned before, my wife is very involved with Meals on Wheels. During March, they have a campaign called March for Meals. It's an annual campaign designed to raise awareness of senior hunger and encourage action at the local level. Senior nutrition programs across the United States promote March for Wheels in their communities through public class, partnerships with the local businesses, volunteer recruitment efforts, and fundraising initiatives. Our local Meals on Wheels is doing their own little event where you can pledge so many, like a couple cents per step that you take to March, you know, penny a step for certain something, which will help raise money. They also are taking flat donations. For nine dollars, you can sponsor a senior for a day. That's pretty much, if you go out to lunch for a day, that's where they cost. So nine dollars and fifty-eight cents to feed a homebound senior in Kendall County for one day. Or you can sponsor a week. You and your company will feed a frail, homebound, needy senior in Kendall County for a week for only forty-five dollars. If you'd like to sponsor for a month, it's one hundred and eighty dollars. You will feed a frail, homebound, needy senior in Kendall County for a month. So I encourage everyone to partake in that. More information, contact Louie's at Meals on Wheels. Their number is five five three two three one six. They also have a Mayor's for Meals campaign, a component of March for Meals that utilizes the involvement of local mayors. So I'll be partaking in that on Wednesday, March twenty-first. So get the word out, very good cause, both of them. Get the word out, support those causes.
Thank you, graduate.
Starts at five. My team started five oh three.
St. Patrick's Day, five o'clock with us.
This is a girl there now. Okay, the match, we're all ready. Budget presentation, oh, staff reports, any staff reports?
No.
Presentations, fiscal year twenty thirteen, budget presentation. Take the lead with Cole.
All right, if you got two minutes.
I think I've got most of that, actually. Okay. And I am going to leave the lights on. I'm not sure which ones turn off which, so experiment with it, we'll try to just, actually, if you want to experiment with it, there's a power panel right at the other side, there's only like five of them that aren't taped. Okay. We'll breeze past these, everybody has seen tonight's schedule, we know what we're talking about, big picture of you, we know it's in a packet. So two funds tonight, general fund and citywide capital. General fund is everything you do as a city, every operational department except generally water, sewer, parks, and recreation. So that's what all of your expenses are, your revenues are everything you collect as a city, not related to water, sewer, parks, and recreation, again, state taxes, property taxes, sales taxes, et cetera. So right into the general fund. Couple things I want to point out, this is the overview of the entire general fund, so all these expenditures contain all those departments I talked about. In general, you've got a surplus expected in fiscal year thirteen and fourteen, which is good news, obviously. Said we wanted to sock away money, gets us up to about twelve percent fund balance in fiscal year fourteen, and then we've got some decisions and some things to watch in the years thereafter. We're not necessarily recommending this as a deficit budget, what we've done five years out, as we've said, all expenses are remaining equal and our revenue projections are relatively conservative, only one or two percent for general revenue. So if the economy doesn't get better, we show no growth, we don't really change anything we're doing, this is what we can expect over the next five years if we don't make any other decisions. In general, we've got tax revenues going up, but that's really only due to projections, that's right here, revenues, the loan projections, and really the infusion of the non-hormal sales tax. The general fund revenue is included there. Your salaries are going up overall for all city departments. That's only because we are planning to hire basically a police officer per year in the next five years. Again, that's something you can review mid-year depending on how your budget numbers come in. Bad bits are also going up each year, year after year, just because we're budgeting for a ten percent increase overall. We've had thirty percent, twenty percent, sometimes ten. Supplies in general are only going up because those are commodities, energy, gasoline, we're seeing five or seven and a half or sometimes ten percent increases in those. And really, your other financing uses down here are just your transfers in and out, we'll get into those, okay? So this is probably the most important page, in my opinion.
Actually, if you want to experiment with it, there's power panel right at the other side. There's only like five of them that are taped. Okay. We'll breeze past these. Everybody has seen tonight's schedule, we know what we're talking about, big picture of you, we know it's in a packet. So two funds tonight, general fund and citywide capital. General fund is everything you do as a city, every operational department except generally water, sewer, parks and recreation. So that's what all of your expenses are, because your revenues are everything you collect as a city, not related to water, sewer, parks and recreation, again, state taxes, property taxes, sales taxes, et cetera. So right into the general fund. Couple things I want to point out, this is the overview of the entire general fund. So all these expenditures contain all those departments I talked about. In general, you've got a surplus expected in fiscal year thirteen and fourteen, which is good news. Obviously, we said we wanted to sock away money, gets us up to about twelve percent fund balance in fiscal year fourteen, and then we've got some decisions and some things to watch in the years thereafter. We're not necessarily recommending this as a deficit budget. What we've done five years out, as we've said, all expenses are remaining equal, and our revenue projections are relatively conservative, only one or two percent for general revenue. So if the economy doesn't get better, we show no growth, we don't really change anything we're doing, this is what we can expect over the next five years if we don't make any other decisions. In general, we've got tax revenues going up, but that's really only due to projections. Yeah, that's right here, revenues. Loan projections and really the infusion of the non-hormal sales tax. The general fund revenue is included there. Your salaries are going up overall for all city departments. That's only because we are planning to hire basically a police officer per year in the next five years. Again, that's something you can review mid-year depending on how your budget numbers come in. Benefits are also going up each year, year after year, just because we're budgeting for a ten percent increase overall. We've had thirty percent, twenty percent, sometimes ten. Supplies in general are only going up because those are commodities, energy, gasoline. We're seeing five or seven and a half or sometimes ten percent increases in those. And really, your other financing uses down here are just your transfers in and out, we'll get into those, okay? So this is probably the most important page, in my opinion, of the entire budget. Actually, there's two pages, your general fund revenues, because those are the things really that we're taking an educated guess on for everything we do in the city, okay? So I want to take some time and just highlight these, and then we can hopefully move forward the next couple of slides. So one, property taxes, right off the top. Corporate levy is one of your biggest revenue sources. Two point two million, again, it's got nothing to do with libraries, it's solely the money that comes into the general fund. So we are projecting an increase, allowing the property tax cap each year for the next five years. So if you adopt this budget, that's what we're forecasting. So whether or not this number actually comes to fruition is a different story. I think we put one and a half percent, CPI could be five years, some years. Two years ago, it was point one percent, and then you've got new growth back through that. So it is very, but from a policy decision standpoint, we're saying levy the maximum amount of the tax cap because you're a growing community, and that's what this shows here. Right below that, I do need to point out that even with this increase here, because of your debt obligations that are on property taxes, city council has already adopted the schedule. It shows that property taxes on the whole for the city are actually going to decrease one and a half to two percent each year for the next three or four years. So even with this increase, we are projecting an overall decrease. Right below that, another important thing with property taxes, police pension. We talked about being able to fund that to the amount of the actuary sets each year. It says, this is what you need to be at in order to fund your police pension system down the road. The target here is fiscal year fifteen, I believe, at five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's the year that if we don't fund it, the state is going to basically take our other revenue sources to be able to pay for that police pension out of the future. So we're showing that we're going to be able to meet this without an issue. You do need to know, though, that this will take over a larger and larger percentage of your entire property tax base. Eventually, until hopefully we're a growing community thirty or forty years from now, that'll probably be your entire property tax on you. That's just what happens in growing communities when they turn into growth. Sales tax, right below that, this is your biggest revenue source on the whole. We did project a decrease from twelve to thirteen because of pro build closing, okay? It's still unknown at this point. We have two sales tax months in, we talked about the abandoned committee in, I believe it's October, November. October is when they announced. November, we know that they were still operating and processing sales. We don't know if people were actually paying sales and then thus generating sales taxes. But we did notice a pretty significant decrease outside of our financial estimates in sales tax in those two months, so it is something to watch. Right below that is not normal sales tax. Again, this is an educated guess. We don't know what the makeup of our community is as far as non-hormal sales tax or sales taxes, because there's different things that do not apply for a non-hormal sales tax that you have to pay sales tax on. Rob, do you know what they are, Dr. Redd?
Yes, automobiles included.
Okay, automobiles included, so thank you. In general, though, municipalities that have this will see about a sixty-six percent ratio of non-hormal sales tax to sales tax, which is what we've budgeted here. Actually, I think we're a little bit less than that. There are communities where it's as high as seventy-five or eighty percent. So a small fluctuation in our estimates here could be an additional one hundred, two hundred thousand dollars that we put towards road resurfacing each year, which would be a good thing. Below that, business district sales tax. If you want an idea of what every business together in Kendall Marketplace is doing, this is the line item to look at. And it is scrolling right here. This is rebated in full to pay off the bonds and the projects of Kendall Marketplace. So as this number goes up and down, we have a pretty good idea of what's happening to the businesses of Kendall Marketplace. So it's very important to track that. After that, we've got three of them, I'm going to point them out. Personal property replacement, personal property replacement tax, state income tax, and the local use tax. And they're all ran about in this area here. These are state passers, or at least they're supposed to be by state constitution. In the most recent budget, if you recall, the governor or the state legislature siphoned off one percent of our personal property replacement taxes to pay for the regional superintendents in the entire state, okay? Fortunately for us, municipality, it only, I think we lost like a hundred or sixteen dollars on it. So, you know, it's negligible to its impact. But it sets up a dangerous precedent that if the state ever says, we're going to start siphoning income tax, or we're going to reduce your percentage, you know, swing on one point three million dollars per revenue could be a sizable, you know, it could be a sizable hit to our budget. So that's something to watch. And you've got to make sure that we lobby our state legislatures when we hear that they're going to be taking away local revenue. Perimutual tax, talked about this in the narrative. It closed in December, so we won't be getting any more of that after this. Building permits, again, this is something you want to watch, mid to bottom of the page. This revenue source is only the cost of offsetting the cost of our building permit clerk, our code official, and inspections. Everything else that we get in from building permits is being put in the citywide capital, and we'll show that when we get there. Similar thing to development fees, these are one-time revenues being generated really to pay for our costs of providing subdivision inspections in the future. There may be opportunities where somebody pays, let's say a hundred thousand dollars, and it only costs us ten thousand dollars in the future to be able to provide those inspections. So we could get a benefit from that, and we have in the past, but it really depends for each subdivision. Subdivisions require more inspections than others, some of them are going to take longer to build. So instead of leaving this in your operating budget, we put it in the citywide capital budget, and then that's something that we have to monitor to make sure that we have enough money to be able to offset those inspections at later date. Finally, on this page is the garbage surcharge. And as we get into the inspector, the expenses, you'll see where the senior garbage subsidies go. Okay, so on to the second most important page, really it's all part of one. The two things that I want to point out on this page, this is the second half of your general fund revenues, is your transfer from land cash, policy decision here. We decided to cease the transfer from land cash to the general fund to pay for salaries. So we're not proposing to do that any year for the next five years. And the second is, we've eliminated the transfer from water and sewer because we're coding the health insurance benefits out of those particular funds. So note an impact there, it's just when you look at it, you might look at it and think it's a revenue. Okay, moving forward. In general, all of your departments, these are on your expense sides. No salary increases projected for the next five years. I'll get into this a little bit later on why, I think it's probably as smart at some point now they're maybe to rethink that. But in general, each one percent salary increases that you wanted to give an employee is going to cost the city about fifty thousand dollars. And remember, that's going in from pound. So you give somebody a one percent raise this year, next year it costs us a hundred thousand dollars to be able to maintain. So just something to think about when you're doing that. All benefit expenses are quoted out of each department, so you're going to see expense increases in each department. Generally, we're not proposing to add anything new, we just shift the costs around to be able to say easily how much does it cost around our police department or streets department, et cetera. Energy and gasoline, I talked about copier costs are quoted out of each department, so instead of finance, they're on the individual departments. Let's get into the individual departments. Again, administration, right up to that. Salary, the only change here is a coding change related to the reassignment of Laura into Parks and Recreation for community development, and then my salary coming back here. You've got the health insurance increase, again, we assume ten percent per year, so that's why benefits are going up. And then contractual services, again, and supplies, pretty much they're on all departments. You're going to see that's your energy and gasoline costs. This is your admin detail page, this is the administration department. Changes that we're proposing for fiscal year thirteen from twelve. We are showing, we broke out the elected officials' health insurance and the staff health insurance just because we break out the salaries for elected officials, administration employees there too. So clearly labeled right there for your review. The I O L conferences added back in, you did take it out last year. Again, it's something that we recommend everybody do. I went to it last year, saw some value in it. Obviously, we haven't been to it in a few years, so you've got to re-review it every year. So that is in there, that's right here, in training conferences and travel, meals and logic. A new line item, small five hundred dollars for filing fees, that's just kind of a recoding of another line item. And that's really just related to making a profit for the county. Professional services did go up slightly. We talked about this at admin, here it is from about eleven to twenty. That's going to be your cost of meditators, video, and a few different studies that you want to do per year. So again, we're budgeting high, so we have room to be able to do or represent our frasals. For instance, when you need one or other studies as they come up, the land cash frasals, the other one we did last year. Okay, on to finance. Again, same things that we've talked about as far as moving codes around, so that's why benefits and supplies are going up. Into the detail on finance, you've got the additional benefits. The two or three decreases that I wanted to point out here is auditing went down. We went out to bid, got a lower price, which is great. We reduced our accounting related to the audit, so we're not having supplemental help. So that dropped from forty-two to forty thousand dollars. And obviously, the finance department, since it's not paying for the entire city's copier costs, that line item has gone down too. So again, not a savings citywide, but for this particular department, those costs went elsewhere. Community relations, real easy. We're not proposing to fund it for the next five years. Negative for the engineering department, all of the E I's costs are quoted out of somewhere else. Police department, again, I talked about the hire. We're not proposing to hire a sergeant next year, and then an officer this year for the next four years thereafter. So that's when salaries go up. And any contractual supply increases in the detail for the police department are going to be solely related to testing and hiring each year for those officers. So if you pull that out, those costs will go down, or if you increase them, the costs will go up, obviously. And there is one for radio purchases, which is on this next page after this one here. This is the second page for additional expenses. There's a narrow mandate requirement. Basically, our old radios are going to be obsolete next year, so they have to spend some extra money to be able to have radios that work. Community development, there is a dip in fiscal year twelve due to staff changes. We switched code officials, the new code official is at a different price than the current one, and then obviously, there was a vacancy there to save some money. So into the detail here for community development, the one is contractual inspections are going to go down because our new code official is deploying inspections. On to public works, which is really just streets. There is one change here in the supplies, this is the aggregate total again. This one actually went down even though we're projecting an increase in gas costs because the streets department used to pay for all the gas costs in the entire city. So we figured out that at the gas station, we can pretty much tell the individual gas stations which department the expense needs to be coded to, and then somebody signs for it, and they do the coding for it. Great, so we have a really easy way to attribute those costs to the individual departments. Property and building maintenance services up here, looks like a new line item, it really isn't, it's just shuffled. I have a broken up line item elsewhere. Repair costs are going up throughout the entire budget because we're not replacing vehicles and equipment as often as we should. Everybody talks about trucks and police cars, and it's also mowers, mowing equipment, chainsaws, those things, you know, and eventually we're going to have to replace them because they're a problem. We are suspending the hanging basket program for two years because of Rock Forty-Seven. We are showing it coming back in fiscal year fifteen, assuming that Rock Forty-Seven is done by then. And as I said earlier in the presentation, the senior garbage service is broken up here for easy reference. So rather than trying to do the math calculations yourself, we just itemize it right there. Next page, this is administrative services. So again, this is your legal costs, I T, everything that doesn't belong to one particular department. This graph really isn't the best indicator of where this budget is going each year. That's because you've got a major outflow of expenses, so you reduced expenses this year because you took your benefits and put them in each department. And then next year, you've got a huge influx of expenses because you've got all of the transfers coming out here. So all of your non-hormal sales taxes you've taken as a revenue, you pass it through this budget and it sends it to the sewer. So it looks like this budget's spending a lot more, but really it's just a passer because of the stuff. Okay, a couple of things on the expense page. One, an early retirement incentive right off the top. We approved that last year. This expense is for three employees to participate. Still open through April, only one of them has actually participated. So right now, your actual expense, nobody else enrolls, is going to be about a third of that cost. The only health insurance costs over this entire budget here are for retirees and sober employees. So this is essentially budget neutral because those people pay a hundred percent of the premium. I T has its own line item now, we created that right here, a hundred and forty thousand dollars next year. More than half of that is actually going to go to the police department singularly for another project. Nothing to do with the police server, they need mobile data terminals in each one of their cars to be upgraded that way they can access the internet, police record system, and the county system. Special engineering services down here, we are projecting to pick that back up in fiscal year fifteen. Again, that's just for anything above and beyond the current E I contract. Professional services went way down because that's where all of our I T money used to be quoted out of. So this used to be our I T and G I S budget. We haven't really done much with G I S the past couple of years, so that went way down. Engineering services here is E I's cost, that's their cost per each year. And after that, you've got sales tax rebate, a big decrease from twelve to thirteen. You front-funded the F E W and pro build payout this year, that's why the expense is way over budget. But we don't have those expenses next year. So just something to point out here, you know, for the past ten years, we've been approving incentives and rebates for minorities that come in, and they build, you know, four, two miles of new roadways, but it's four lanes, it's concrete, turf and duders, they built a detention system. We've attracted businesses sooner than normal. We have reaped some, we've actually really reaped a lot of benefit from developers front-funding these things, and the developers now are taking the hit. So just from some of the comments tonight, I realized that we probably didn't went through and, you know, kind of give everybody a list of all the things that have been built by developers as a result of these incentives. So it's my intent over the next couple of months to try to compile something, so you have an idea of, yeah, we got burnt by certain developers here, but, you know, there is also a lot of things that we've done pretty successfully. So, but anyway, some days these sales, someday these sales tax rebates will eventually expire, and hopefully that will go down. Because that is about a million dollars in sales tax revenue that we're currently sharing with developers, basically to fund infrastructure that's already been built, so. Contingencies, all the way at the bottom, fifty thousand dollars per year, which is a little bit more than we budgeted for each year in the past. Again, your policy is three to five percent, so we're way below that, but I think we're taking a step the right, step in the right direction there. Last page, your admin services department, this is all of your transfers. So your citywide capital, which we'll talk about in a second, this is funding your road resurfacing. In fiscal year fifteen, a portion of this is your library capital fees going to fund game farm road, so they're in there. Transfer to debt service, we do have a donut hole here for two years because we're not going to need that. Eventually, we're going to roll back property taxes, and then you will need it obviously in fiscal year sixteen and seventeen because that individual bond will have property tax revenues. Your sewer transfer, that is the sole cost of your rock or your financing each year. So your first payment is actually due in fiscal year fourteen. Again, another donut hole, we don't have a payment due next year, which allows us to do some of these other things, but that does pick up in fiscal year fourteen, so you need to transfer some money out to be able to pay that. Parks and Recreation is increasing, we talked about it because of health insurance. And then the last one on there is transfer to library operations, which might seem odd because they're kind of a standalone budget, but we transferred some new costs into the department for insurance liability and unemployment insurance, and so we need to offset that to be able to make sure their budget's neutral. So again, no impact to us or them, it just gives them a better idea of how it takes to run their department. Citywide capital, we generate some revenues, this is non-hormal sales tax, we're eventually able to go. And then in general, this is everything not related to water, sewer, parks, wreck, police cars, public works cars, et cetera. There's no fund balance in this fund because it's general fund funded. So all the money pretty much that's being spent here is coming straight from the general fund, and it's in the same general fund bank account. So there's no reason for this fund ever really to have a fund balance from year to year. So it's the same impact as leaving the money in the general fund, so that's why this is a zero each year. Projects to talk about, safe routes to school next year, we've got a grant for that. Hopefully, we finish it in thirteen, if not, it'll get rolled over into thirteen and fourteen. I T has shown, it's shown currently as budget neutral. So obviously, with the vote tonight, you know, it's a budgeting decision for you whether you want to continue to show that in the budget it's budget neutral, or you basically want to build in a contingency. Your transfer in fifteen, again, I pointed out six hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Three hundred and thirty-two of that is your library capital fees, so it's earmarked, it's shown, we're spending the money in the appropriate place. On the expense side, road resurfacing this year, and each year going forward with the non-hormal sales tax. We are showing in fiscal year thirteen a funding of the road study. So provided this budget gets approved, that in there, you So provided this budget gets approved, put that in there, you've already approved the contract, EEI can begin as soon as we get to go ahead for this budget. Two big things to talk about, River Road Bridge, we've got that expense, here it is, $600,000 in fiscal year '13. We approved the intergovernmental agreement, this will be a zero here, hopefully, and $100,000 each year thereafter. So note that impact, if you look at it long-term, other than it gives us cash flow options each year going forward. The big project, one of the biggest ones we're going to do for the foreseeable future, is game farm road. We are showing here that we'll be bonding it, so we are showing here that we're paying these bond payments each year with general fund dollars at the tune of about $350,000 per year each year going forward. So again, it's about a $7 million project, two and a half is going to be coming from the federal and the state government, and so we have to figure out a way to fund four and a half million dollars of that each year going forward. But I think there's no other way to do that other than to bond it. So you'll have to set up an alternate revenue stream. Hopefully, in a couple of years from now, we'll have utility taxes, sales taxes, that we'll be able to say, "We can pledge this as a fallback in case we can't pay for it." Otherwise, I don't see how this project gets done. The 2015 final way to bottom is the extension of this game farm road project. So the revenues and expenses is a result of the bond payment itself, and then the actual, you know, 4.5 million dollar outlay in fiscal year '15, and that's your debt obligation each year going forward. Okay, take a bit of a broader view. What didn't we talk about, what didn't I talk about in all of the presentations that I've got? In the narrative, there's a more detailed list, long-term road matrix. We're not going to know what we actually need to spend each year until we do the study. Sign more road, Route 34 traffic signal, we're on a temporary signal. Eventually, someday that's going to break. If not, it costs us money each year to maintain, about $10,000. And there's a chance that Ida eventually could say, "You either need to put up a permanent one or take it down." So we don't have that funded, it's about $200,000, so that may be something to talk about. Feature Center HVAC, it's 20 years ongoing for the same, 30, oh, okay. For the same HVAC unit, we've talked about it, just to replace the HVAC unit, it's like $350,000 or $400,000. So at that point, there's actually some efficiency in being able to put in a ground unit, maybe even adding a room, running new docks, getting an energy-efficient unit, spending an additional $100,000 can be basically maybe double the size of your current building, so. Fox Hill Water and Sewer Recapture, it's compound interest. Council approved it a few years ago. You could actually make the case that you could borrow simple interest and save a future developer or the residents money over the long run. That is not due until 2023, we talked about that in the audit each year, but again, it is something that's compounded each year. Water main replacements, sewer main replacements, a lot of small projects. They affect 10 or 20 homes apiece, all of them in the older part of town. It's something that if you were running your water and sewer services business, you'd want to make sure that those replacements were folded into your operating costs each year. So something we should think about. Sewer system monitoring, we don't have a system in place that is anywhere near the same as our water system, which allows us to monitor water levels at home, in contacts, people via email. You can log in from homes, you can go to water level, we don't have that in the sewer system. So right now, the station gets blocked or goes down, basically, somebody gets a phone call and they have to run in to figure out what's wrong. So there are some long-term cost efficiencies there. Crystal Bay intersection improvements, I don't recall, actually, deadline in the annization agreement will be accepted, intersection obligation improvements there. It's about $3 million over the long term. The hope is there, obviously, that we be a developer that wants to build a commercial area immediately adjacent to it, and then they pay for it. Playground replacements, I do expect that the park board is going to come to the city council at some point in the near future and say, you know, "We need to be planning for replacements." Playgrounds generally have a lifespan of 15 to 20 years. Feature is quickly approaching that, and will probably have to be taken out in the next one or two years. So the conversation is, we want to replace it, and if so, how much money do we want to spend? Raises for employees, I touched on it briefly. You know, you probably could go five years without budgeting for it, it's going to be a significant impact to morale. You'll probably see a lot of people take other jobs. You'll lose money on training, obviously, rehiring those people, but please, each time you have somebody leave, it costs you, I think, $3,000 or $4,000 just to certify them, they don't have the training to do the testing, to do all the background checks. It takes a couple of months. So there's a significant staff cost, both in personnel time and in actual cost in order to replace people. At unions, we've talked about gambling. If I was a betting man, I was going to say, "You're probably not going to win five years' worth of arbitration hearings for a 0% raise." So eventually, I think, push will come to shove, there you'll have to do something. Vehicle replacement schedule, we've talked about. Okay, so the last part, there are still unknowns, ProBuild, early signs aren't good, obviously, but we plan for the worst. Building permits are really good so far, 11 already in February. That's about a third of what we had all of last year. General fund major revenue trends, and all of ILY's, some of them were down, some of them were up, some of which we expected, some of which we didn't. And it's been really good reviewing each one of those each month. Administrative inspection fees, I talked about accepting those revenues now and having an obligation to complete the work later. That's something that we need to be mindful of. And really, the three or four week period that I'm targeting, late March to mid-April, you're going to have all those pieces of information come in. You're going to have a much better picture of what's going on in the city just from your sales tax reports, which are going to be two huge pieces of information in April. Health insurance costs, we know that they're actually about 10%. That'll come to the admin committee in a couple of weeks, so those are right online. And then your fiscal year '12 actual, we're projecting a $900,000 surplus this year for our general fund. We're hoping that's going to be higher, a much higher, you know, we don't know yet. So again, finally, big picture. General fund surplus is in fiscal year '13 and '14, so we're doing pretty well, and we hope for the next two years. After that, we are showing deficits, not something I would recommend, so we might have to take some action over the next couple of months. We might not have to take any action if things don't materialize. Your general fund, you're going to miss your lower end of your fund balance policy by this much in fiscal year '14, and then it's going to go down each year thereafter. So again, that's a policy decision each year for the city council when you approve the budget. And your water and sewer fund, which are your two main cash funds, they're going to be fairly level through five years. So that's good, you'll be able to maintain sufficient cash flow for the next five years, but that is also assuming that you pass a sewer fund bonding fee in fiscal year '15 of eight and a quarter per month per user. You don't do that, we're talking about a different cash position. And then again, your cash position is improving, then stable, and then progressing in fiscal year '15. So again, next steps, next city council meeting, the public hearing. I promise it'll be a very brief presentation, less than five minutes, and then it's open debate at the city council throughout March and April. So thank you for listening, and that's it.
Hey, Marty, you going to give us a copy of your slide as well on that?
Yes, thank you.
We put it on the webpage, too, right?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any additional business? Very none on the wall.
I'd like to wish all the members here a happy birthday.
Oh, happy birthday!
Happy birthday, young man.
It's not today, but it was a few days ago.
Thank you.
Happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
I wish I had any.
I'm a person, sir.
No objection, I will entertain the motion at two with adjournment.
Second.
All favor.